All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Planning Board meeting of March 11th, 2025. We have, as far as the Board members here tonight, we have myself and everyone but Member Conley, so we have Member Kenahan, who will be voting on any applications tonight as a member that we vote upon. We are, of course, here at Braintree Town Hall. The meeting is being broadcast by B-Cam TV, Braintree's local broadcasting station, and available on YouTube. As we normally do, we'll start with the old-new business at 7:00 and move on to the many public hearings that we have tonight, starting at 7:15. All right, so I will start with the first item on the agenda, which is an introduction of Ryan Egan. And Assistant Director Murphy, would you like to give an introduction?
Certainly, yes. Mr. Egan joined us about two weeks ago, I believe. He's been a wonderful addition to the team, and I welcome him the opportunity to address himself to the Board.
Good evening.
Thank you for the introduction, Connor, and thank you for having me tonight. My name, as Connor mentioned, my name is Ryan Egan, and I am the new Economic Development Manager in the Mayor's Office. I come from the city of Marlborough, where I served as Chief of Staff, most recently worked under the Mayor previous to that, and the Mayor of Framingham, very familiar with town, city form of government, if you will, and I've been a town councillor in the town of Randolph for seven years now. So very familiar with local government in the area, very much looking forward to being here in Braintree. This role will, which is the first of its kind here, will focus mainly on being a liaison to local businesses, developers, supporting existing businesses, and then marketing Braintree to sort of recruit new businesses and hopefully grow our tax revenue and new growth. And I just wanted to come down, introduce myself, say my door is always open, and I'm in the new Economic Development Suite next to the Human Resources Office. Phone's always on, so looking forward to working with the Board. I'll be here at the monthly meetings, and if there's anything I can do for you guys, I'm here. So, thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. We're looking forward to working with you. Remember, during the master plan process, that was one of the things that was talked about a lot, getting an economic development person in the town to help support growth in local businesses, and we're excited to have you on board.
Following through, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next item we have on the agenda is an approval-not-required request from, well, for 1923 Granite Street, from Trigate Adams Property Owner.
Good evening. I'm Steve Horstfall with Kelly Engineering Group, representing Campagnelli Trigate Adams. The applicant's here for the property. You may know that they're 1923 Granite Street and 859 Willard Street in Quincy, known as One and Two Adams' Place. They comprise a little bit of registered and unregistered land, and we're seeking to subdivide the unregistered land into two lots, partially in Braintree and possibly in Quincy. So we're seeking approval tonight for the Lot 1 and Lot 2 that are located on the plan, that have, Lot 1 has frontage in Braintree and will consist of about three acres or so. The second lot will be combined with land in Quincy for the remaining development.
Thank you. Assistant Director Murphy, I think you had submitted a staff report on this, but do you have anything you want to add at this time?
Yes, through the Chair, to the Board, just some minor comments. We will be processing this in conjunction with the city of Quincy and their planning board for co-endorsement. So after endorsement tonight, the applicant will pick up the Mylar, bring it to Quincy, and Quincy's planning board will endorse it as well, and then record it with the Norfolk County Registry of Deeds.
Okay. Thank you. All right. I'll see if any members of the Board have any comments. Member Kenahan?
I have no comments.
Member Kent?
Just out of curiosity, where's, so the taxes right now, how does that work? Are you paying just to one town?
I believe it's split.
It is split?
Yeah.
Just curious.
It's some, part of the property is assessed in Braintree and in Quincy.
No other questions?
Thank you. Member Kent?
No questions, no questions.
Member McComme?
Thank you. So, the subdivision, what are the lots going to be used for?
I'm not sure of the potential development at this time. They're, they've just asked me to prepare this plan in accordance with what their requirements were. I don't know about the future development at this time.
Got it. Okay. If I heard you correctly, one of the lots is three acres?
That's correct.
And the other lot size is?
It's like 10,000 square feet, maybe?
10,000 square foot.
Yeah. Batteries.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and I don't have any questions. I guess with that, just be looking for a motion to endorse the plan as approval not required?
So move.
We have a motion by Member Kent. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member McComme, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right. The next item on our agenda is a minor modification for 810 and 40 Arnold Street, and that item will be tabled without testimony to April 8th. And same with the planning board fees will also be tabled without testimony to April 8th. So we'll move on to the approval of meeting minutes for February 11th, 2025. Are there any members who had questions with those minutes? All right, saying none, looking for a motion to approve the meeting minutes?
So move.
Motion by Member Kent. Do we have a second?
Second.
By Member McComme, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. And so we will take about a seven-minute recess and come All right. Welcome back, everyone. It's now 7:15, and we can begin the public hearings that haven't been advertised for tonight. This is a public hearing, so people in the audience will have an opportunity to speak on the application and the presentation that's being made. I just want to remind people to direct all comments and questions to me as the Chair, and then the applicant will have an opportunity to respond, and we'll try to get questions answered if they come up during the comment and question period. Please introduce yourself when you come up, speak clearly and concisely, try to keep your comments relevant and not duplicative. It's good, you can come up and say, I agree with so-and-so who just spoke before me. We have a lot on our agenda tonight, so in fairness, everybody who's here, I like to try to move things along while understanding that there are concerns that will be expressed, and we want to make sure that we understand what those are as well, so trying to balance the two of those. We will, of course, hear from the applicants, and then hear from the Board members, staff, and the people in the public. So just wanted to remind people of that. And we'll begin with our first application is 250 Granite Street, Planning Board File 2502502. If you could please read the public notice?
Notice is given by the Planning Board under the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Sections 9 and 11, and the Braintree Zoning Ordinance, Chapter 135, Arches 1, 5, 6, 7, 8, 11, and 14, that a public hearing will be conducted on Tuesday, March 11th, 2025, at 7:15 PM in Braintree Town Hall. The Planning Board will consider an application for special permit, 135-617MUPUD, and site plan review filed by ZMA Development LP applicant. The applicant is seeking to construct a 325-unit multifamily dwelling development as shown on the filed plans, use by right, under Braintree Zoning Ordinance, Section 135-617, mixed-use plan unit development district. Project also includes landscaping, lighting, parking, and stormwater improvements. The property is located at 250 Granite Street, 131 and 135 Lakeside Drive, so in Highway Business District, and within the mixed-use planned unit development district, as shown on Assessors' Map 2089, Plot 22, and Assessors' Map 2039, Plot 6 and 7, with a development area of seven acres and a total land area of 112.07 acres.
Thank you. All right. And Officer Clint, if you'd like to go ahead, Attorney Marinelli?
Thank you. Good evening, Chair. Crowha, members of the Planning Board, for the record, Frank Marinelli. I'm a lifelong resident of Braintree with my office located at 439 Washington Street in North Braintree. I represent ZOM Living concerning development of the residences at South Shore, 325 high-quality residences, $140 million of economic development, ideally located at South Shore Plaza, creating critically-needed housing and a mixed-use live-work-recreate environment. ZOM has developed over 30,000 quality residences nationwide, approximately $5 billion in development. With me is our entire development team tonight: Jim Dunlop, who you've met, is the Managing Director of ZOM, Jeff Durk, our Transportation Engineer of VAI, Ian Murray, our Landscape Architect of Copley Wolf in Boston, Frank Andre, Architect of Hord Copland Mark Architects, Brian Dundon, Project Civil Engineer of RJ O'Connell Engineering, Susan Ellsbury and Lauren Scribby of Benchmark Strategies. Madam Chair, I'll provide an overview, and then our presenters will be Jeff Durk, Transportation Engineer, Ian, our Landscape Architect, and Frank Andre, our Building Architect, in that order, and then Jim Dunlop and our entire team are happy to answer any questions concerning this exciting development of the residences, a use by right, in the MUPUD. In October 2024, the Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend enactment of the Mixed Use Planned Unit Development District, the MUPUD overlay. In November 2024, the Town Council voted overwhelmingly to enact the MUPUD. The MUPUD is now Section 617 of Braintree zoning ordinances. It is the law that applies to 10.3 acres of wasteland, which historically had no economic development due to antiquated and conflicting zoning. As stated in the staff report that you've received, page 8, quote, "The parking area is surplus and very rarely used by patrons. The two dwellings are secluded and not in an appealing sense. This area has become attractive to homeless people setting up camps," end quote. ZOM's $140 million development in the MUPUD is transformative. First, because it creates critically-needed housing on seven acres, including 10% affordable, and that's consistent with the Sections 617 purposes. The need for housing is indisputable, and it's the subject of many, many studies and reports. Secondly, as confirmed by the town's fiscal peer reviewer last fall, the residences at South Shore generate average net real estate tax revenue of approximately $500,000 each year to Braintree, plus $2.3 million in immediate pre-construction building permit and utility connection fees, to a town that less than a year ago had an $18 million deficit and the need for an override. Residents want revenue generation like this rather than increased taxes on residents to pay for schools and municipal services. Thirdly, the ZOM development combines residential with large retail, and that's a regional and national model that cannot be ignored, as set forth in the purposes of Section 617. This type of overlay zoning created successful mixed-use venues like Hanover Crossing and University Avenue, both of which are overlays like the MUPUD, and other examples regionally and nationally that we all know. In terms of the development itself, proceeding west to east from Granite Street, the approved concept plan by the council and the conforming plans before you tonight provide direct access to and from three curb cuts on Granite Street that most of us are familiar with, and they provide the access to the layout of 325 quality residences in a single four-story building, again, consistent with the concept plan approved by the council. And the grade drops from Granite Street significantly to the area where the 325 residences are constructed. The residents will have pool, all sorts of amenities, indoor and outdoor amenities, fitness center, 47.9% open space where only 30% is required. So that's almost 60% more open space than required. 52.1% lot coverage where 70% is allowed, so less than the allowed lot coverage. An over 10-foot-high berm at the easterly end with green giant arbrevitae's on top, thousands of plantings, as you can see in the planting schedule on Sheet L200, the landscape plan of the approximate 30-page plan set. Wrapped parking inside the building, 475 interior spaces, which means if you live on the fourth floor or any other floor, you can park inside on the floor where you live. A central reception court at the easterly end of the residential, which is closest and with synergy to the commercial development across from Target and the future Dicks, formerly Nordstrom. And that's in the shape of an inverted U, one-way flow in the entry curb cut and an exit curb cut. And then further east is the ingress egress to the interior garage. And finally, a public walking trail along the southerly perimeter, parallel to the dam. That's the layout. ZOM residences pay for its own snow plowing, trash collection, repairs, and maintenance. As you can see from the plans, and as has been repeatedly confirmed throughout these hearings and the council hearings and the Planning Board recommendation, there is no resident vehicle access to or from Lakeside. Even though off locusts, ZOM is also committed with South Shore Plaza's permission to thicken and to augment the vegetation between the plaza and the Flaherty School boundary. There are mature trees in that area that will be preserved, and gaps will be filled and undergrowth added as necessary. And ZOM will do that with South Shore Plaza's permission, even though it's off locusts from the seven acres that is the residences of South Shore. The ZOM development, large trucks which are related to construction will be directed to use ingress and egress to and from Granite Street. The ZOM development team met with the Planning Department and the Town Department Heads on March 5th. We received the Civil Engineering Peer Review Report today. Everything is moving in a positive direction. The MUPD received more public support by emails and letters than any other recent zoning enactment. Over the past year, there was robust community outreach and intensive community meetings. The website, the residences at southshore.com, remains a resource where anyone can go to learn everything about the development, as thousands of people already have done. The plans before you meet all of the requirements for approval of the residences under the provisions of the MUPUD, Section 617. And that is the conclusion of the favorable staff report, which states, quote, "This report reflects multiple criteria that the applicant meets as it relates to the residential development of MUPUD, which is in compliance with the concept plan that was approved under the Town Council Order 24-34. The Department is of the opinion that the application submitted is in keeping with the concept plan for the MUPUD. The proposed multifamily dwelling a use by right is an action seen at multiple retail centers found regionally and nationally providing residential in proximity to these retail areas, and it's a form of stimulus aimed at increasing commerce and viability in a market that continues to evolve. This is a needed action within our community and, most importantly, at an historically retail-based area. These actions offer positive third-party effects, not only for the uses at 250 Granite Street, but the Granite Street corridor as a whole," end quote. And that's the staff report. The use, as I stated in the MUPUD, of multifamily is a use by right. This is not a special permit for the use. It's site plan review for the use. It's a use by right in the table. Today, the town designated a peer reviewer on traffic. Jeff Durk is ZOM's Project Transportation Engineer. Jeff is here. The development does not result in a significant traffic impact over no build conditions. The vast majority of vehicle trips are distributed to and from the Granite Street I-93 corridor. As set forth in the traffic assessment, that's part of the record, the development will design and implement an optimal traffic signal timing, phasing, and coordination plan for the Route 37 Granite Street traffic signal system. So at this time, Madam Chair, I'd like to introduce Jeff Durk, who will speak to the traffic study, and then Ian will address landscaping, and Frank Andre will address the building materials and the layout. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board. For the record, Jeffrey Durk with Vanessan Associates, and as our attorney had mentioned, we're the transportation consultants for the project. I am not going to go through the entire traffic study. It's going to be subject to peer review, but I did want to elaborate on some of the high points of the analysis that we've undertaken as a part of the assessment. I know you're all very familiar with where the site is located in the parking lot of the mall. Just a couple of things I wanted to point out as it relates to the site. Obviously, its proximity to the interstate and the interchange off of Granite Street is advantageous as it results to transportation and distribution of traffic. So we do expect that the majority of the trips are going to be oriented to and from the north of the project site, and we'll use the interchange. So we've estimated that about 65% of the trips are going to want to find their So we've estimated that about 65% of the trips are going to want to find their way up to 93. The vast majority of that would be traveling into Boston. As it relates to use of the roadway network, we did assume some use of Common Street. As we understand, that is a travel route during congested time periods on Interstate 93. If you're either coming in from the Route 3 side or the 93 side, the congestion that occurs within that interchange area does influence people's choice of which roads to use. So we did look at existing traffic patterns, and the way we've assessed the impacts, as our attorney had mentioned, we're assuming about 15% of the trips associated with this project would be using Common Street either to travel and get on Route 3 up to 93 or to make local trips in the area itself. The project is expected to produce about 100 peak hour trips. So with about 15% of the trips oriented tour from Common Street, that's about 15 vehicles during the course of an hour using that roadway. So as it relates to impacts, the 15 trips over the course of an hour, it doesn't rise to a level of significance, at least from the standpoint of a noticeable increase in delays or queuing that might result from the additions of the project's traffic. Now, that being said, with the most of the traffic being out on Granite Street, we did develop a comprehensive improvement program to deal with the additional traffic patterns on Granite Street. And so as you heard mentioned, there are seven traffic signals that comprise the Granite Street traffic signal system stretching from the interchange in the north all the way down to the Granite Corporate Woods Drive in the south. Those signals are all, they function as a part of an adaptive signal system, meaning that they do continually assess inflows and outflows of traffic along the corridor and then self-adjust themselves to accommodate the traffic flows. This project being residential at this location is different from the retail use that's there. So we do expect not only an increase in traffic, but a change in the traffic patterns. So that does require some adjustments to the adaptive system. So we've committed to making those adjustments, and the adjustments will be made at what we call two touchpoints. Since there's not a project there today, the system is functioning fine. In fact, most of the movements, with the exception of a movement at the Forbes Road intersection, are operating at D or better. So they're acceptable traffic operations. The system is working very efficiently in terms of accommodating the traffic. With the residential traffic, we will have more of an outflow towards 93 versus what's happening there today. So that need to retime the traffic signals is something that we will undertake. We're suggesting at 60% occupancy, so it gets us to a level of occupancy where those change in traffic patterns would take place. So we'd make the adjustment at that point and then go back and make an adjustment at 80% occupancy. So it's really letting things settle out and then making the adjustments to make sure that the system is responsive and adaptive to the new change in traffic patterns in the area. The other thing that's unique about the site is we have two bus routes that pick up within less than probably a two-to-three-minute walking distance of the site. So the 236 bus and the 238 bus pick up at the corner where the parking garage is from the project site. So as you looked at the site plan that our attorney was showing, you see a deliberate intent to construct sidewalks along the frontage of the project, and then you see all of these crosswalks. And not only are we trying to create, as you heard, the mixed-use nature so that you could walk to the mall, but also importantly, as we're looking at reducing traffic, is to make sure that people have accessibility to those two bus routes, which will take you into Quincy, to Quincy Center Station, where you can get the red line or change to the commuter rail there. So that's an amenity. Not only providing those physical infrastructure improvements, the other thing that we're doing is we do have a transportation demand management program. One of the elements of that is a financial contribution to the tenants of this project. So that if you are a new tenant of this project and you sign a 12-month lease and you are committing to using public transportation, you will receive one month of what's known as the monthly link pass. That is an unlimited use of subway or bus services. So what we want to do is get the residents familiar with the fact that the service is there. We provide the infrastructure to get you there, and now we're financially inducing you to use that mode of transportation. We're hoping that that's something that will continue. So again, this is just a high-level overview of the transportation analysis. As you heard, this will be subject to peer review, and we look forward to working collaboratively with the board, staff, and your peer review consultant. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. For the record, my name's Ian Ramey with Copley Wolf Landscape Architects. I'm going to walk you through the landscape design, starting with a high-level overview of the landscape. So when we approached the landscape, we really had three sort of primary concepts, the first of which is to bring a residential character to this otherwise retail-heavy development, introduce a new character there. The second thing is to engage with that open space, the beautiful DCR reservoir landscape. So I'll show you how we're doing that. And then secondly, or thirdly, to just sort of bring in a breath of fresh air, if you will, to bring active activation and vibrancy and a sense of sophistication in terms of the landscape that this project's going to deliver. A high-level look at the plan, some of the key attributes that we have along South Shore Plaza Road, which is the road on the north side. We're introducing new tree-lined streetscape with sidewalks for improved walkability. In the northwest corner of the plan, we have our primary entry into the site. That's the drop-off area that Frank had mentioned. This will be an area for visitor parking, as well as pedestrian drop-off and pickup, and sort of the front door where residents will congregate as they wait for their ride and meet their fellow neighbors. Interior to the site, you can see we have a fully enclosed amenity courtyard where the pool will be. We also have a series of open-ended courtyards that are open to the landscape. I'll show you those in greater detail. This is an enlargement of that front entry area. Again, it's a one-way traffic loop counterclockwise with about 18 parking spaces. We have an entry court feature there where it will be a flush plaza condition to prioritize the pedestrians. We have robust screen planting and ornamental planting around the perimeter and a double tree-lined walkway from South Shore Plaza sidewalk to the front door. Next slide. This blows up the amenity courtyards as well as our southern open space. So again, we have a fully enclosed pool courtyard that won't be visible to the public. That'll have an amenitized program that ties closely with the interior uses of the building. The other two courtyards, as I mentioned, are open to the landscape, taking advantage of the views to the DCR land. These courtyards, while are open to, the landscape will be enclosed with fencing. The fencing will be enclosed with landscape so that you don't really notice the fence. You see the landscape. It's really part of that natural experience. Each of those courtyards will have a range of programming activities that we're still working through for the residents. For the open spaces to the south of the building, we have an accessible walking and bike trail. That walkway path goes from the upper sidewalk around the building and back up for a complete loop. That's approximately a quarter mile a walk, 1,400 square feet, or linear feet, rather. And again, there's plenty of opportunities for that path to engage with the open space views to the DCR. This blows up the eastern end of the project, where we have this robust berm. It's a large berm that's approximately at its highest 12 feet above the adjacent grade. On it, we have more than 80 fast-growing native evergreen trees, primarily green giant arborvitae. We've also introduced some spruce and some pines, as well as some ornamental flowering trees, just to add a little more diversity to the composition. We're also closing down the portion of Lakeside Drive that lies to the west of that turnaround. That's unused, underutilized pavement, and so what we're proposing to do is to close the curb cut, extend the curbing, and in the place of that hardscape, place this new landscape. So it's going to be a really well-buffered condition on the eastern side. And I think if we go to the next slide, you'll be able to see an image of that. So this is a view as if you were on Lakeside Drive before you get to the cul-de-sac. The berm is the landform that's in the background, and on top of it, you get a sense of the height and diversity of the evergreen trees that will be planted on top of it. Very robust buffer. And next slide. And then these are just some character images of the site furnishings that we're proposing. So starting in the upper left, for the amenity spaces for residents, we will have an arbor structure for shade. That'll be a mix of metal and wood, nice scale for the pedestrians. In the lower left, in our entry courtyard, we will have a raised planter condition that has integral benches and ornamental plantings in it. Next to that, we have two examples of the bench seating that we'll have, more architectural seating up at the front entry to the building, whereas on the DCR path, a little more park-like open-space bench that you see there. And then the upper images on the right show some of the other smaller-scale furniture, namely the planter boxes, the bollards, the receptacle. And the lower right shows the idea of the ornamental fence that'll be worked into the landscaping around the courtyards. And I think with that, I'll hand it over to Frank. Thank you.
Thank you. For the record, I'm Frank Andre with Hornd Copeland-Mock, and I'm the architect of the project. So I will try to stitch all this together and show you how the architecture of the project fits in and some of the details about my components and elements that Frank described earlier. Start with this colored plan that you can see a little bit more of how the internal plan works. Start out by pointing out the light gray parking deck, which is fully internalized here. That is to say, it's fully wrapped with the residential units, which you see in different shades of yellow, and also the residential amenity piece, which is colored orange here. This is the ground floor plan. The other plans are very similar, except they have continuous residential above the amenity. You can see the crenellated nature of the plan. That's sort of the companion piece to all the outdoor spaces and courtyards that Ian just described. The great thing about that is it does a couple of things for us. One, it breaks down the mass of the rather large building so that it reads as smaller components as one walks or drives by or sees it across the reservoir. Secondly, it allows the residents to look into all of those great landscape courtyards and spaces. You can also see in the northwest corner, the carve-out there where the entry court that Ian described is, that sets up the front door of the building. You come right in there, that front door where the hand is pointing. In there are the primary residential amenities, the leasing office, and so forth. And of course, that then opens up to the active courtyard where the pool is. So that's where the residents will recreate, as opposed to the more passive courtyards that are open, especially to the south and southeast. If you, I also point out that it's a four-story building. You'll see that in the images that follow, but the parking garage is also four stories, so it's completely hidden sectionally as well. So it sits below the roof of the residential building. Okay, next slide. And then here's a peek at the architecture, and we are looking at the front door. So we're kind of looking through that entry courtyard. You can see Ian's landscape treatment there and some of the plaza design with the curbless hardscape, and then the formal front door. The architecture is designed to be fairly formal on this side. This is, again, the mall side, the north side. And there are references here to indigenous residential architecture, particularly row homes of Boston. Both in the scale, the sort of the vertical four-story bays that you see that are modulated with the deeper gaps between them. Also, in the material choices, this is primarily red brick, although there are other masonry here, the light-colored masonry that defines the front door and some other key features, all of which is trying to, again, add interest and break down the mass so it doesn't feel like one large monotonous building. It has a lot of interest as one moves around it, a lot of depth. The next image, I think, is a closer view of that same entry piece, which gives you a little bit more of a peek at some of the brick detailing that we are planning to incorporate here around the entry, around all the fenestration, the suggestion of a cornice, sills, and, you know, fairly traditional details, but rendered in a contemporary way. And then the next slide. And then this is a view of the architecture facing the reservoir, so more on the south side. This is one of the fingers that defines one of those courtyards. And you can see the walking path on the right, the courtyard, one of the residential courtyards on the left. The architecture here is similar. It uses a lot of the same cues, the bays, the modulation, the scale. The one difference here is that we've created a datum at the top of the third floor, so it's sort of a one over three to kind of step the scale down, a little more human scale here, adjacent to where it's primarily bikers, runners, and pedestrians. Next slide. And then finally, a view across the reservoir. This is what you would see if you were looking through the existing trees, and you can see that we're below the top of the tree, the existing tree line there. And of course, we've got our new landscaping, which is helping to buffer it from the residential neighborhood to the south. And I believe that concludes my portion of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're happy to answer any questions that the board may have or the public. We feel that the peer review will occur with the traffic expert. I think MDM was hired by the town, and our traffic engineer will work with them to get them any information, but we feel that we would be in a position for the next meeting to potentially have some draft conditions. And it is a use by right with the multifamily and the MUPUD, the way that was created and the intents and purposes. So we'd ask the board to consider that as well. We'd like to get started. Thank you.
Thank you. Assistant Director Murphy, I know you have a thorough staff report here. Is there anything that you'd like to add tonight for the board?
Yeah, just briefly. First, it's filed under 135-617, which then invokes 135-612, which then invokes 135-503, and 135-502, which then invokes 135-711. So you see the application I have for you for the special permit for the PUD and then the site plan review criteria on 135-711. Staff has made some preliminary comments as it relates to the plan submitted. Some of those comments have to do with dot and i's crossing t's in terms of the zoning legend. Some of the other criteria found under 612. Additionally, as mentioned by Attorney Marinelli, we are performing a pretty hefty peer review on this application. We are peer reviewing currently the water and sewer impacts of the proposed development. We're peer reviewing the stormwater impacts as well, and we're also peer reviewing the traffic impacts. So we hope to have that information finalized by the end of March to present to the board. I would like to note on the record that at our December 5th meeting, we did talk about other landscaping opportunities here found within the site. Staff is encouraging that a more aggressive buffer be planted to the Flaherty School. There are some gaps there in between the ball fields where the applicant could have the opportunity to add additional plantings. And then some other discussions we've had within our department, we would like to see a portion of the boulevard that comes from Granite Street down to the project site be resurfaced a little bit in terms of its landscaping and its overall appearance. I would like to note that we do have our peer review consultant for the stormwater here tonight, Eric Diaz. If you could have an opportunity to sort of present his findings.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. And with that, Eric Diaz, if you could please come up. Thank you for your report and work on this.
For the record, Eric Diaz, registered professional engineer, Strongpoint Engineering, peer review for stormwater. We were able to get, and I just want to make it clear that it's a preliminary report, some preliminary findings on this. We have dug into this pretty, pretty deep and very comfortable with what we've seen so far. Just in the interest of time, we wanted to get some of the broad-stroke items out to the group before the meeting tonight. So there may be more to come, and certainly they have a few things to address. But by and large, I will say that the folks at RJ O'Connell did a really good job on this drainage design. They actually approached it from a pretty conservative standpoint. For example, their test pits show a very, very sandy material, which has the highest acceptance rate that we're allowed to use for infiltrative design. They've actually chosen to use a rate that's only about half that, actually a little bit less than half that, which is going to be just very conservative. They've also taken the groundwater foundings and added a corrective factor to those groundwater findings, findings, excuse me, just to be a little bit more on the safe side. One of the comments that we have, and it's honestly probably the most significant comment, is that when you consider that adjusted groundwater, it does put the bottom of some of their infiltration systems within four feet, and in that case, you need a groundwater mounting analysis. Plenty of ways to skin that cat, nothing that I think is going to be a very big deal. Anything from just running the analysis, showing that it doesn't have an issue, which with very sandy materials, usually we don't have an issue. And they could even, since they added that adjustment factor to their groundwater foundings, they could play with that a little bit as well. So I haven't found anything in my review to date that concerns me, that is going to be...
that is going to be anything that would overhaul the design. I think like Connor mentioned, it's more just dotting i's and crossing t's type of things. But by and large, first blush, you know, very impressed with how conservative they were in this. So happily, happily pleased so far.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
For it. All right. Now going to see if there's anyone in the public that has comments or questions on the application. Just as a reminder, introduce yourself. If you come up with your name and address, and just again, try not to be repetitive. We did receive written correspondence, and so I thank you for submitting those. I do want to let everybody know that we do have those comments also. Now, come on up. Thank you.
My name is Michael Foley. I live in the downstream area of the project. And I emphasize downstream because I have a major concern of the project's impact on the system we have for removing sewage. We're going to have the equivalent of 300-plus additional homes in a concentrated area that is a very low land. So when you take that and put it all in pipes and put it towards some of the system that's in place, which may happen unless a bypass pipe is put in so it can be handled at the pumping station. We've had two 25-year rainstorms, excuse me, a little nervous up here, that inundated our sewer system with freshwater. And part of it was probably due, and I didn't check with the engineering department. They told me their pipes were good, partly due to 70- or 80-year-old clay pipes that take the sewage and run it downstream. Now, the pumping station is over on Carmen Street. The first time I was in the Carmen Street pumping station was in the 90s, and it was almost overflowing with sewage and freshwater from all the tributaries of pipes coming into the area. It was scary to be inside the pumping station. So up to, I think it was about 10 years later, a new pumping station was put in to handle the inflow without addressing the freshwater. So in other words, we did not put in new sewer pipes or stop people from putting water into the sewer system, which happens in people's basements. And a lot of that area where I'm from was probably, or still is, pretty close to the water table. So what we had twice was two backup events into people's homes in the basements. And each house had a couple of hundred to several hundred gallons of untreated sewage go right into their house. And it was because either the pumping station couldn't take the water out of the pipes that was coming to it, or there was something else going on. I think it was multiple factors involved. But I was wondering if the engineering department for the sewer, doing the architectural design as well, the structural, all that, if they are aware of how much sewage is going to come out of that project and go into an area that's already overtaxed for the pumping station that was put in about 15 years ago, maybe 20 years ago. I don't know the exact date it was put in. But it was supposed to be big enough to stop from having floods because it happened off and on. And pumps, pumping trucks had to come into the neighborhood twice. Two trucks, about 20,000-gallon trucks, sucking sewage out of the pipes in the streets to keep people's houses from flooding. And one of the trucks, I heard, got permission to put it into a surface drainage area with special permission from the Department of Environmental Protection to stop it from backing up the whole neighborhood because it was a disaster happening. I felt bad for my neighbors. I got word what was happening. I was on a job, and I've done inspections for water and sewer pipes to be installed in other towns. So I'm pretty knowledgeable on this stuff. And I went right to the hardware store and put plugs in my laundry tub in the basement. And the sewage was six inches away from the inlet to my tub. People around me, about five of them that I know, got some sewer water in the house. One guy got a ton of water and had to take my sump pump, backup pump, and pump it out of the cellar. So I don't know if the company was aware of this problem with the area because a 25-year storm can come twice in 15 years. It's a health hazard. It's something that if everybody finds out about it, they might not want to move into my neighborhood. I want to sell my house eventually, someday. Someday, I'm not going to be able to handle having that house. I just retired last year. And I just want to know more about what's been studied, how the sewage is going to be handled going out. There's options to put in a bypass pipe, run it separately right to the pumping station. And if ZOM is just the beginning of the development of this property, you know, where they could put in more housing projects, it's going to be a major problem. You'll probably have to put in a whole new pumping station. If you upgrade the sewer pipes, it's going to be $5 or $10 million for three or four streets. I don't know what the cost was. The cost for renovating my house went up three times. I'm assuming the public works projects have tripled in 10 years for cost. And I was told in October when I came that people were aware of it and that it was being looked into. I haven't seen anything printed, haven't heard anything about it. Nothing was presented. I heard this fellow over here mention something about sewage. And his voice doesn't come that well across the microphone, not like mine. I'm not afraid to speak up. But I would appreciate it if everybody got a little bit closer to the microphones. I don't want to think I came here for nothing. And I want to be heard, and I want answers to what's going to happen in my neighborhood. I just don't want to see that sewage coming back up into my house. And my wife told me if it did come in, we're gone. We're not staying because we want our investment to grow with the town like this thing promises to be, a complement to Braintree. I love the looks of the project. I think the idea is great. I don't like the idea of having apartments here. I would much rather see condos. I think you'd probably get the same or very similar income for the town with a condominium where a person would be more interested in upkeep of the property. The people that own and manage the property will probably just sell it off to someone else. And then it goes downhill. It will look like a real housing project. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I hope that by the time we have the next meeting, I have more answers on the handling of the effluent coming out of the building. There's going to be a lot of extra people flushing toilets. It's not going to be pretty if the neighborhood gets ruined. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, yes.
Allen Flowers, 48 Fallon Circle. And here we are, the worst development ever to hit Braintree. How did we get here? I don't know. I don't know how it happened. But I realize that it's a project by right, but that doesn't make it right. It's a disaster. You saw the pictures there. It's the ugliest thing I've ever seen. The architect was right. It's not Braintree. It's a Boston row house. There's got to be something we can do because we can't have that in Braintree. Thank you.
Justine Huang from 25 Lakeside Drive. Thank you for giving me that opportunity. I'm just start looking at 135612. One of the item in there, in term of item F, item number one, was relationship of the PUD to a better neighborhood to ensure the PUD is in harmony with the neighborhood. Looking at this design, we did ask if this design could be changed to in harmony to the neighborhood, more toward the Braintree's characteristic instead a apartment building next to my work in Boston. So there I would ask if we could change the building, at least the top, to close to in harmony of our Braintree's town's characteristic instead of a big mattress box. And in the same list, which is item number nine, it indicated protection of adjacent properties against noise, glaze, and signage or other objectable features. Within the PUD, there's no such protection there for the neighborhood for this item. And I'm asking the planning board if this moving forward is adding an amendment to identify how the noise and glaze and signage will be protected, how that will work to protect our neighborhood adjust to property across the ponds, property affecting neighborhood, and my house. And I like the architect indicate that is bringing the residential feeling to the plaza. So that building is a mattress box, not a feeling of residence. So I hope that the design could be looking more harmony to our neighborhoods. And looking at the beneficial to the reservoir, I would like to request the burn, the 12-foot burn, to extend it all the way to Lakeside Drive if you're closing Lakeside Drive. And also the tree replacements. Those tree has been mature over there over 10 years. If you're closing, if, we would like to close the Lakeside Drive with the burns and with removing the existing mature trees to the Lakeside Drive to better protect the neighborhood with noise and signage perspective. I know it can't be done because I was looking at my work, the building, the engineer had moved higher landscaping specialist to move mature trees to preserve them before, after they build and moving back. And from this request, it's basically just saving those mature tree that which was grow over 10 years to Lakeside Drive, completely close Lakeside Drive where you have the protections and build the burns for 12 feet continue all the way and of the, to the Lakeside Drive connection to the reservoir. That's where the neighborhood can be more protected with mature trees and noise reductions and Green Island effect, that perspective. One last thing that I know is not mentioned here during the initial meeting with the planning board and the town council was where is the community usage for this development? We talk about a lot about open space, a lot about private pool and gated community. I'm looking at where is the community usage. As a big community leader in our town Braintree, I've been here over 20 years. And if this pass, we asking for some, you know, some location or example, meeting room or some location where the community can be utilized, especially in our neighborhood that we have to inclusive this huge mattress box. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I had a question. Could I ask the question or is it not? Should I go through?
You still need to direct it at me.
Okay.
Just introduce yourself first.
Oh, sorry, yes. Jennifer Wadlands, 37 Parkside Drive. I'll be quick because I was one of those people that wrote a pretty lengthy letter. So I promise you, I'm not going to go on and on with this. But I, and I know you've heard from hundreds of residents that are upset, so I'm not going to go on and on. But I did have a question. Oh, sorry. The emergency access. Where is the emergency access? So I heard, cut the, I heard, and I'm going to have these terms wrong, but I heard, it seemed like they were saying, cut off that access at the back with the gate, if I understood.
Are you, are you asking about pedestrian fire access or vehicle?
Like vehicle fire.
Okay.
Police, fire.
All right.
Sorry, I'm going to step out of your way.
No, we're not, we're not impacting the gate. That is an emergency, a gate that when we were out there with Chief Iola, he said that they've used it once in 15 years. They do test it, but there's no impact on the gate. We're not, we're not doing anything with the gate unless we're told to by some design or you want to move it to a different location. But it's not something we're proposing to do.
Thank you.
So that, that's the emergency access.
If you can just, hold on, hold on.
I just wasn't sure I understood it.
Hey, guys. Sorry.
I wasn't sure I understood it.
They're trying to film.
Okay.
It makes it difficult. So, all right. So I think we have some of the answer. I think I understand your question. We will have time for more questions.
Okay.
And I will bring it up. And I do just want to thank you for putting your comments into the letter because they were, you clearly spent time on it.
Okay.
So go ahead, sorry.
All right, thanks. So I just, you know, Justine spoke. She's the closest neighbor, right? So, you know, I just want to remind you that the neighborhood, we are a close-knit neighborhood. And for some people, it's their largest investment of their dollars and what they plan on retiring on. And I, I know that you will take thoughtful consideration of the, some of the mitigation that could be used. Some things I've thought of is, is moving the property back to, into the parking lot a little further away from the neighborhood and more buffers. I was happy to hear Connor say, adding, you know, there's some holes, but really monitoring that closely and, and moving it back a little further and harmonizing. Well, you know, I do like the building. If I was in a different place and it wasn't like part of my neighborhood and, you know, people weren't looking up at it, but it doesn't necessarily harmonize into a single-family neighborhood. So I would love to see something a little, little different. I've seen some developments around town that seem a little different that maybe over by Campanelli's, they seem to fit a little more with Braintree. So that is just my only thought, if we could really try to work hard for that because these are, you know, no offense to ZOM, they'll sell in three years. They've said so. But these are people's largest investments in their homes and their retirement dollars. So I just, I know you're all thinking of that, but I just wanted to remind you. And I have a copy of the letter. Do you want me to just leave it or does everyone have it?
We all have it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Liz Page. I live at 137 St. Azav. I'm also the vice president of the North Braintree Civic Association. And I would like to start by asking a question through the chair. If you could please give us some clarifications of what can be done through this board? Can conditions be put upon this project? Can mitigation be applied to this? Because I heard so many times, this is a use by right. Yet we're all here hoping that things can be done to make it more compatible.
Yeah. It's certainly a special permit application. There's a list of uses within that residential is a use that's allowed, but there is most certainly the opportunity to have conditions and mitigation as part of the special permit that does look at the factors that we talked about when we put the PUD in place.
Okay, good. Thank you. So I would like to read my letter. And I say, we come before the planning board tonight.
And Miss, I don't mean to interrupt you in the interest of time. We do have the letter. I know I have read it. If there's anything in there that you'd like to...
Well, I do feel like some of these things are things that I would like people in the audience to be aware of. And so I, that's why I would like to have the opportunity to say them because I just sent this letter out, and I'm really glad you got it. I wonder if you all had a chance to read it because I did it at like 5:00. So thank you for being that quick. But we come before the planning board tonight in hopes that you'll do your best to enforce Braintree zoning bylaws to the highest standard, one that will produce a good quality development, but much more importantly, a development that will be compatible with and not detrimental to our adjacent residential neighborhood. What really concerns me and quite frankly frustrates me is that the applicant, through the entire process tonight, never refers to the neighborhood. They are constantly diminishing the importance of our neighborhood, and they pretend that they are not near our neighborhood and that they will not have any impact on us and therefore that this development does not need to be compatible with our neighborhood. The applicant has taken pains to ensure that this proposal will harmonize with the South Shore Plaza, but has ignored harmonizing with the neighborhood. The proposal makes it quite clear that there is no attempt to harmonize with the neighborhood and to be compatible with the staff. and to be compatible with the style and the scale of the neighborhood. And we hope that you will consider the suggestions for conditions that we sent to you in the letter over the weekend. There are different zoning bylaws that provide the provisions for these conditions to be enforced. And when we went through the public hearing process for the town council, there were many town councilors that said, well, we need to approve this so they can do the PUD and then the planning board can enforce the conditions to protect the neighborhood. So we hope that you folks will be able to do that and that you will do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. My name is Julia Flaherty and I am the District One Town Council Representative. I live at 11 McQ Drive and I'm very grateful to be heard this evening. In my role as a town council member, I voted against this proposal, but in this case, my vote was not in the majority. So I'm here tonight to pursue measures that can help mitigate the impact of this project on our community. Residents come to me with many concerns, but one of the greatest is consistently around traffic. So as we heard today, the study, which is 700, more than 700 pages long, and I did not read all of it, but the study that we heard about today indicates only marginal impact on the intersections of Route 37 at Forbes Road, Route 37 at South Shore Plaza, and Route 37 at Granite Woods Corporate Drive. And that's great for residents of the complex or shoppers at the plaza. But 14% of all of that traffic is, that's like 160 trips, is, is going to flow towards Five Corners, which is like famously congested and difficult to navigate. So I, I think in fairness, that in this process, that intersection should also be evaluated for mitigation and adapted signalization because it, it really is just already a thorny mess. And I, I think it's also a great idea for it to be done at 60% or 40% and then 60% occupancy because rather than relying on forecast, traffic forecasts, you can like kind of really get the facts on the ground. Another 14% will flow towards the Washington Street Common Street intersection, and I think that intersection should similarly be evaluated in the same way. These intersections are both really congested and resident concerns should be addressed. I also noted that the traffic estimates included a considerable expectation that residents would use public transportation, and I think it's likely that many of them would. Unfortunately, the development isn't close enough to the T for people to walk. So I'm really pleased to hear tonight that there's a plan in place to create an incentive for residents to use the bus. But I also looked it up and a passenger study conducted by the MBTA in 2022 found that 48% of bus riders report household income below $56,000. And that is not the targeted demographic of this development. Maybe that's partly a factor of root locations, but it seems likely that some of it at least is that people with greater means make different choices. And considering that these are anticipated to be luxury apartments, the income of the residents is likely to be high enough for them to make other choices. So I'd like to suggest that a private commuter shuttle that goes directly to the T be employed. I think if clean, quiet, comfortable, reliable transportation is provided, I think residents will use it. And in fact, I think it could really be a selling point. Additionally, I didn't see any materials in the documents related to a tree protection plan. Is there not something online or has, because I don't want that to be neglected. Adjacent to the, the property now, there's a, a stand of vegetation, some of which is some mature oaks and plenty of which is trees. And in Braintree, we have concerns with heat islands and we have concerns with just having a presence of trees in our, in our community. And the tree protection bylaw says that for each tree that you chop down, you need to, you need to tack in mid advance if they're greater than eight inches in diameter. And then you need to either make a plan to plant them new trees selected by a certified arborist, new trees on your property, or you need to pay into a tree protection fund. And I just want to make sure that that, this developer is held to that standard. And I just didn't see evidence of it in the materials yet. That's all I have for you today. Thank you very much for listening. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilor Flaherty. Is there anyone else with comments or questions on 250 Granite Street?
Good evening. My name's Rob Cadyer of 143 Middle Street. So some of the concerns that I have is, some other people have mentioned it earlier, it's the, the aesthetic. It really, really, really does not fit Braintree. They said it themselves, it's, it looks like Boston. I looked at the picture, that looks like something you'd find in the seaport, something you'd find at like Copley Square, definitely nothing you'd find in Braintree. So some of the other developments in Braintree, somebody else mentioned it looked, the one down by, down by the McDonald's looks like it fits better. Or I would encourage them to look at like Turtle Crossing or Jonathan's Landing, something that looks in, like it belongs in Braintree, not something that you just plucked out of the seaport, just dropped down by the mall. Just the clash in that neighborhood, it just wouldn't look good. For those of you who are old enough to remember, you can probably remember the stark difference between West Berlin and East Berlin on which side of the wall. You had the West Berlin, but then you have like these blocky, prefabricated, kind of ugly looking buildings on the east, that minimalist utilitarian, it's not, it, it doesn't fit Braintree very well. So if there was any way that we could get the, not so much the architecture itself, more the facade, if we could put a requirement for the facade to look like it harmonizes and blends in with the neighborhood, that would be ideal. I'd also like to echo the concerns that the, that the first speaker had about, about the sewage, particularly if this is going to be the size of the project that it is and as well the, if there's going to be more projects down the road. That really would need to be concerned given the low lying nature of that area and with the frequency of decade, 50 year, 100 year flooding events becoming more and more common in this area. I'd also like to echo the traffic concerns that the counselor just put forward as well. I've been stuck in that traffic for half an hour just trying to get from the exit over to the light. The last thing this town needs is more traffic. I think everybody here would agree with that. It's, it's really becoming a concern and adding more, more residents to the town and especially on a busy road like that. It's probably not the best. So yeah, those are the major concerns that I would have, the traffic, the flooding, and also just how poorly it seems to harmonize with this surrounding area. If there is any way to mitigate that, I highly, highly, highly encourage you to require that. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move on to some of the questions and comments from the board, I just wanted to ask a couple of questions, sort of summarize some of the public comments. Assistant Director Murphy, has DPW taken a look at this or given any written comments on the sewer water questions?
Not yet. We're still undergoing the peer review of the sewer and stormwater management systems. So once we have those results from the peer review consultants, they'll be prepared in a report, they'll be provided to the board and general public.
Okay, thank you. And do you have any idea of when the peer review is supposed to come back?
We're working on the paperwork this week, so hopefully by the end of the month.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
And then some of the traffic questions that came up. I know that our peer review, one of the questions he's planning to look at is whether the Common and Washington intersection should be part of the study area? Could we ask him to also look and see if Five Corners and his opinion should be part of the study area?
Certainly, we can have a discussion around that.
Okay. And as far as traffic monitoring, Councilor Flaherty raised the question of actual monitoring as the process goes on instead of forecast. What is our typical process with traffic monitoring?
Typically, after 100% occupancy, we require reporting at six months and then 18 months after.
Okay. So we could look at potentially adding partial occupancy monitoring also if.
If desired by the board, yes.
Okay. All right. Okay, I think that's it for the question. Oh, the, that's the other one, the Lakeside Gate. I believe based on prior looking at this, that the gate needs to remain open for fire access, but is it possible to talk to the fire chief again to see if there's adequate fire access without keeping that gate open and just buffering that whole area to close it off completely?
So in talking with the fire chief, they wouldn't attack a situation from Lakeside Drive. That gate's primarily there in case there's a catastrophe on the Granite Street or Common Street side and they need vehicular traffic to exit the site, worst case scenario. We have had discussions during the town council order about potentially removing the gate, putting in bollards and landscaping it a little bit better. We can continue to have those discussions if needed.
Okay, I, I think that would be good if we can at least find out if that's a possibility. All right, thank you.
Certainly.
So, Member McComey, questions, comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just also want to say that I totally agree with Councilor Flaherty about the monitoring Common Street and also Five Corners. Seems like we overlooked that. I guess I'd ask Mr. Durk, when was the last time that the lights on Granite Street, if, if you know, were reprogrammed? Because we've talked about this for 10 years and I, I, I thought it had been done. Yeah.
So it, it has been done, it's an adaptive system now. So it's supposed to be adjusting itself automatically. It's supposed to be hands off. It's monitored externally without having to have someone go out there. So it is something that's supposed to be continuously updating itself. So it's supposed to be a hands off system, although it does require calibration every once in a while. And that's where the new traffic counts we had suggested in the monitoring frankly, helps to educate the system. And so that's why, as much as, as much as we want to say you shouldn't have to touch anything, it eventually starts to drift. But that's why remote monitoring, which is a contract through the Department of Transportation they have with a third party that does monitor it and makes adjustment. But every once in a while, they need real time data and that's kind of what we're going to be doing as a part of the project.
Yeah. And basically we have to go through the state to do this, right?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
And, but our project would be, our project would be one of your mechanisms to, to the extent that you feel the state might not be listening to force it because we would then need to go to the state to obtain a permit to actually implement what we're talking about doing. So it would be a way of forcing it and depending on how you structure the, as I said, the touch points, you could get touch points as the project is built to make sure that the system is operating as we hope that it would be.
Okay, thank, thank you very much. I guess I'll ask these next couple of questions to Mr. Marinelli. And if I could, Mr. Marinelli, could you just, how many, how many curb cuts are we going to have going into this project? Is there going to be just the two or are there actually going to be more than two?
So the central receiving area, which is close to the commercial, the South Shore Plaza building is a 16,499 restaurant.
Yeah.
Which we have a use that will have great synergy with the residential. That circular is two curb cuts, one way regulation as was described by Frank and team ingress and then egress. And then further down, there's, there's an egress to the garage, which layout plans. That's three from the Plaza Drive. As far as Granite Street, you know, there's, there's three ingress and egress, but as far as the, the drive is concerned, that's, that's, those are the curb cuts.
Yeah. Okay. A follow up question is, on the drawings, I, I thought I saw a, a path outside of the, the project. Was I correct in assuming that that's the public path you're talking about?
Yes, that's the public path that starts in behind the berm on ZOM's property. And the public path goes down, heading southerly to the perimeter, southerly perimeter along the, parallel to the dam and then comes back up on the other side.
This path?
Yeah, that's, that's it.
That's the path I saw. Okay.
And, and, you know, to the chair's point, just while, while I'm up here, if there's some decision that the, the gate should be blocked entirely or a bollard thing, you know, were amenable to it. I, I agree with what the staff said, that from what we've heard from the fire department, that their primary accesses would be in and out of Granite Street and emergency and, and Common Street. And certainly if, if they need the Lakeside Gate, then it should be maintained, but it looks like it hasn't.
Just to be clear, this is the gate here.
Yeah.
So the, the path will be totally outside of, you mentioned a gate, so a gate's going to enclose the entire project and the path will be outside of that gate?
No.
No, is that correct or not?
You would be able to walk through and then use the path on, on the ZOM property.
We can tack to this. The, the path is out, there's no, there are no gates. It's not, the property is, the, the site's not gated. We will have some fencing around these courtyards with landscape and fence just to make sure residents, you know, have their space and public doesn't wander into it. But there's, there's no gates or, or fencing to prevent people from walking this path all the way around. And this emergency access is on Mall property, Mall Road to Lakeside Circle is out, out of our, we have nothing to do with that gate. If you guys want to change the gate, I have nothing to say.
I thought, I thought I saw some fencing in one of the diagrams.
There was, there's fencing. We are, like this courtyard here, we don't want people wandering into the courtyard.
Right.
So we'll have landscape barriers, but some fencing within the landscaping just to make it clear and probably a gate, a door, gate, you know, but, but here and, and probably here, but not all the way around the property.
Okay, thank you. And actually, while you're up here, Councilor Flaherty kind of triggered something. So when we permitted Jonathan's Landing, I believe we also put a condition in for a van to go to the Braintree T Station. And so we put that in and it turned out that there were very few residents that wanted to use it. So that might be something that you want to consider.
We, we study that. We do do that.
Okay.
It's not a van, it's usually a shuttle service.
Shuttle service, right.
But it, it, it really needs to be effective, meaning residents really use it. We don't want to run a shuttle just to run a shuttle.
Yeah, no, no, I understand.
Whether you have a condition or not, if we feel like there, there's a use for it and the residents really want it, we'll do it, we'll do it anyway.
Sure, okay. I'm just saying, I, I don't recall exactly, but I, I remember they started it and then they, they didn't have enough usage, so.
Right.
Just something to think about.
Yeah, no, definitely. Thanks.
Okay. I, I just, since we're just starting off, I just have one other comment. So the buffering on the east side to the Flaherty School there and the residents, are those trees going to be at height when they get planted, meaning eight or 10 foot tall or do they grow into it? Meaning eight or 10-foot tall, or do they grow into it?
So, the green giants that Ian talked about grow like three feet a year. And, you know, normally, they'd be planted at four to six feet, or do you want to talk about what's in there?
Yeah, so the green giants, we have specified at a range of heights, just to get a little bit of diversity. So, they'll be coming in at six to eight feet, I believe we have eight to 10, and then 10 to 12 feet height. So, they'll be coming in at various heights, and they'll grow anywhere from two feet to maybe 30 inches a year, once they get established. The mature height of the green giant goes up to almost 60 feet under ideal conditions.
Okay, well, that sounds reasonable, you know, except when you, you know, the residents want buffering. And so, I mean, the buffering starts immediately, so I'm just going to throw that out there. So, I just want to make sure.
Right, our intent with that, the 12-foot high berm, plus the up-to-12-foot-high trees on top of that, that's a 24-foot day-one condition, and then from there, it'll, it'll, it'll get taller. We are trying to stagger the trees so that, you know, there's not a lot of sightlines through them to the best ability that we can.
Yes, I understand that, okay. Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that sometimes it escapes us that that's a very dense and thick buffer that we've spent a lot of time and thoughtfully designed, and I think the staff report acknowledges that. And the closest home is well beyond the school, it's about two football fields from the property. So, just to remind of the lengths that we're going to, to really provide a dense and generous buffer.
Yeah, you understand my point, Mr. Marinelli, is having the buffering start immediately, I think is critical.
Absolutely, I mean, I think within reason, you know, to, it's built up, as Ian has said, to 10 feet, and then putting the various species on top. He's said it's six to eight feet on the green giants, so, you know, that's, that's pretty good to begin with.
Yep, okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Member Kent?
Yeah, actually, well, yeah, stay with that graphic there, photo, or rendering, or whatever, yeah. So, I'm trying to do the math here in my head, but the building height is going to be 48 feet?
A little less than that.
Okay. I think, I think where you're going with that is, the berm is 13 feet, and the larger arbividee are 10?
12.
12, so 13 and 12 is 25, right?
Okay, and then you get to...
And if this building is 48, you know, where's 25? It's probably, day one is what you're going for. The barrier, day one, is somewhere in this, in this range right here.
And the berm is set in front.
Come up to the microphone when you're talking, so I think you got it.
I was just going to make the point that the berm is set in front of the building, and you're looking from about five feet, some inches, so you're looking up, so it's actually going to cover the majority of the height from day one.
Okay. So, I, you know, the quick math was, it was going to take five, six, seven years to get to the rendering that's on that?
It's probably going to take three or four, probably.
I'm sorry?
Three or four, probably, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there is a difference between day one and five, you know, five years of full, full barrier, you're right.
So, could the berm and the, and the trees be planted right at the beginning of the project?
I think they could be, we could, we could work on that schedule, yeah.
So, I'm also concerned about during construction, noise particularly, you know, impacting the school. And, you know, that we, during the day when the construction was going on, and anything that could be done to mitigate the noise, you know, at the school would be helpful in getting to the, you know, getting to the right answer here. I guess another thing that I'd have to put out, would be, put out there, is, I think in one of the previous drawings, we saw the architecture was sort of stepped, and, you know, as it, as it approaches, do we need the full 48 feet? Or could we, you know, step it down, and we'd lose a few units, I guess, if we did that. But again, you know, in context of the neighborhood and everything, it would probably play better if, you know, we didn't go to the full four stories on the end of the building that abuts the Lakeside neighborhood.
I think that's, that's, I remember the step that you were talking about was several versions of this project ago. And what, the result of that was taking the project from five stories to four stories. I kind of feel like we are where we are with the, with the height.
All right, I understand, okay, I mean, we're looking for win-win-win here.
Yeah, I get, I get you, we can study, we can study things, that's just my reaction to that, yeah.
Okay, yeah, well, we'll follow up on that. And I guess, while you're up, just on the two and a half acres that Zom is not buying, where currently, there was the, what was it, a 99 that was in there?
Yeah, 3.3 acres, let me show you. You're talking about this other part of the PUD.
Right, so with respect to that space, is there's an understanding, or perhaps something stronger than an understanding with Simon Properties? That, you know, they're not going to go to some other developer and, you know, put in another 100 units in that spot?
No, that, that is a commercial parcel.
That's commercial, it can only be used for commercial?
Right.
Okay, so you wouldn't want another...
I don't want, yeah, Simon doesn't want either. They have a plan for this that, you know, will be announced at some point, but...
Yeah, I think we'd like to, if they could attend the next meeting, we'd like to hear what they've got to say about that. You know, we're kind of looking at the, you know, the kitchen remodel here, and it looks like, you know, it's great stuff, but we need to look at the whole house.
Right, yep.
Okay. And, you know, and this would also be for Simon, you know, what's, any other plans about the Nordstrom wing and the retail place, the other... The other wing there that is...
Yeah, my understanding is that they'll be at the next meeting, and, you know...
That would be helpful. Construction noise, you know, to the extent that that can be mitigated, muffled, or whatever, that would be important to the schools, I think we talked about that. I had asked about other comps and the comparable size, and there are several in Boston, I mean, in Quincy, Waymouth, Randolph, Braintree.
Dedham.
That, yeah, so thanks for that. The sewer system was, that's a concern, I hadn't focused on that before, thanks for bringing that up, a person in the audience. I guess, I guess that's... That's it for me, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Member Kane?
Thank you, Chairman. So, for, I think, we've seen so many letters that come through, and it's always about, you know, the harmonization and protection of the character quality. I remember before I joined the board, coming to a meeting where I sat down and somewhere around there, and they were talking about projects that happened in the city. And the Campanelli's development came up multiple times during that meeting, how it was such a great success story. I'm sure you don't know where our Italian restaurants are, like, you know, you, but just to put it into context, when you leave this meeting, if you go down that way, you take a left, you're going to go by McDonald's. On the left side, there's going to be a development there, it's gabled roofs, it's not boxy. I'm a structural engineer myself, I know the benefits of having a box construction, it's, it is a prefabricated system. They're highly engineered, though, just to reassure the public, it's not like this is some shoddy piece of construction. But it is clear, and we've heard it time and time again, that, you know, their interest is something that's maybe a little bit more residential. Now, you have a difficult thing in front of you, right? Because on the one side, you've got residences, you put up a bunch of trees that help to block, but on the other side, you have an exposed structure that's facing the mall. And there has to be some continuity there, and so, I guess what I'm getting to here is that the architectural blockage, or the way that you're going about creating architectural harmonization, which is what these letters all say, is by providing this berm. And this berm is going to be 12 feet tall, and it's going to have a bunch of trees on it, and that's great. Yeah, I guess it will solve that situation as long as the trees stay alive. So, if we aren't going to change the architectural layout of the structure, we need to make sure that the landscaping is maintained, and maintained long, long span. I am not a water expert, but I would think that groundwater is going to be 12 feet below that berm, or plus four feet further down, right? So, what is the, what are the methods in, yeah, copy wolf, what would be the efforts or measures that are put in place to ensure that those landscaping stay alive?
It's a great question, so there'll be a permanent automatic irrigation system that's installed, that'll use smart controls to monitor the soil moisture. It'll have rain sensing to know when a rain's coming, or when it's too dry, it'll activate the system. Zom will maintain this, they'll have their horticultural experts as part of their operations team, take a look at the plants on a routine basis throughout the year. They'll have a fertilization and a pruning program, I'm sure, to keep that maintained. So, there'll be a lot of eyes on it, and there'll be automatic watering to keep those trees adequately watered.
Okay. Perhaps this is a question for the rest of the board, as I am not an expert on neighborly disputes, but if my neighbor, let's say, 20 years from now, I have a neighbor right now who's very young, and, you know, he's able to attend to his, to his landscape, but let's say, 20 years from now, he's a little bit older, I'm realizing I'm talking about myself here, and I'm not able to keep up my lawn, and it's not as beautiful, I put an irrigation system in, it gets overgrown with the roots of the, of the trees that I planted, and it decays. What measures are in place for my neighbor to make sure that my property looks okay?
I don't think you're asking Member Kent or Member McComey that question.
I'm not, I'm just speaking aloud and wondering, because this is our defense, right, for the neighborhood. And we do read every letter that comes in, and we see the importance of maintaining your neighborhood, your tax, no, your, your highest investment, right? And we care, just like I would care, if my neighbor were not taking care of their property, that would drive down my prices in my property, my retirement fund, right? So, it's really important that we have some sort of system in place, and I guess, something that we need to think about further down, I see Connor, maybe you're getting to this.
Kane's question through the chair, so we typically have conditions on almost every project that comes to our board, requiring that they maintain their landscaping in accordance with the record plans. And given this application specifically, I imagine that language will be a lot more comprehensive than what we typically propose. As is such, we go through pretty much every site every other year, and we take a look at their landscaping plans, and we say, are you in compliance, or you're not in compliance? As a department, we pick up the phone, we say, hey, something's wrong here, you got to fix it, give them a couple of months, they'll usually fix it. If they don't, we bring them back in front of you. And we saw that over the past year with 238, 310 Grove Street, and we saw it with a couple of other properties as well.
Okay, okay, so, I guess I would say to the public, know that there are systems in place there, right? Similarly, the sewage thing that came up, I guess I'm kind of going on a little bit of a tirade here, just to say that we hear you, all right? And your words do matter, this can seem like such a sterile environment sometimes to come into. I see some nodding out there, I want you to know that we are reading, we are doing everything we can to listen, to care, but also to provide a means for success for everybody, right? So, okay, so to the sewage, you know, as the chairwoman has said, you know, we're going to look into that, there will be a peer review on that. The transit, great point by Councilmember Flaherty, we're going to look into expanding. So, you know, I'm reiterating a lot here, but I just kind of want to humanize this, and say that we hear you, we care about you guys, and we also care about you guys as well, as developers, you know. We want to see Braintree grow, to flourish, to keep up with the times, to be a place where somebody like me goes out to our drink, you know, at the South Plaza, has a good time, maybe meets up with my friends who are going to live there. We care, we're going to find something that works for everybody.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can just say that, that we have looked at the sewer, Brian Dundon, our engineers here, project engineer, in terms of the calculations, so we certainly care too. And we're, we're looking at the Common Street pumping station, I think that there's a peer review by Weston Sampson, who is the towns consultant. So, Brian will be working with them. And as far as the landscaping and maintenance of the landscaping, once a condition goes in the decision, it runs with the land, because the decision is recorded. So, whoever the successorona becomes, if there is one, it just runs with the land, and you've got to follow those conditions.
Right, so unlike your neighbor, you might just blow your leaves on their lawn, we actually could do something about it here. All right, Member Kenahan?
Thank you, just a couple of comments. I agree with Member Kent that I think it would be very helpful for us to have an understanding of what's going on with the entirety of the property. And like he brought up with the, with the buffer, I imagine this is a, what, two-to-three-year project to construct? I think it's imperative that that buffer is constructed to also prevent that noise and sight, I guess, for the neighborhood. I like the idea of the, the shuttle that was brought up to help possibly mitigate some traffic, I think that would be a great thing to see. I think that's all I have at this time, thank you.
Thank you, that's, and thank you all for asking a lot of the questions and comments that I had also. A couple of things that I had on my list as well, I think, and I'm glad Mr. Dunlap to hear that Simon's coming to the next meeting. I think one of the big things when we were going through this, the zoning change was the interaction between this project and Simon. And when we have a special permit, come in for a thousand-square-foot med spa, the owner of the building is required to update their plantings and do all the other things that they hadn't done. And it doesn't have any relation to the use itself. And so, here we have very distinct use-related questions that are being raised. And I have the few things on my list that have to do with Simon property, but this project in particular is, you know, I think the buffer to the Flaherty School, I think that point has been raised well, that there are some trees that are not in the best shape right there, and could use in consideration of this project and the lines that go across that way, could use some upgrades. So, I think that it's important that that be looked at, I understand it's Simon property, but that, as of now, this is all Simon property, and it's just looking to go to somebody else. So, I think that's an important point that we look at. There should be more connection between the pedestrians and the mall, I think that was one of the big selling points here, was that you would have residences that would go to the mall, would go to the restaurant next door, or whatever the final commercial plan is for that. And I would like to see some, something showing a little bit safer and nicer-looking connections for those pedestrian areas. The question was raised about the shuttle for the residences, this is somewhat of both, but I do think it's important that there be a shuttle to Quincy Adams. The bus is not used all that often, I would ideally like to see a shuttle that's more specific to the mall, so that it could have more of that traffic. I don't know if that would be used for the mall any more than it would be used for the residential, but I do think that's something that we should at least ask a question and see if it's appropriate. One of the questions that came up during the zoning change was the fact that Simon's selling this property and undergoing whatever process they're going through with the mall. But I, I raised it before, and I want to raise it again, that I would like to see some commitment to reinvestment in the mall in connection with the sale of this property. And I know we talked about the plan and so forth, and I'm not saying that I think that's appropriate, I understand why Simon needs to go through the process with their out parcels that they don't own and different things. But I would like to see some connection between these apartments being built and the tie towards the investment in the mall itself. apartments being built and the tie towards the investment in the mall itself. Yes, yeah, go ahead.
I was hoping I'd get a chance to use this. So with respect to Simon Properties, uh, revenue for 2024 is $6 billion, net income is $2.37 billion, and the net income has doubled over the last five years. So, uh, you know, they're not a not-for-profit, but they do have resources, and in the win-win-win scenario, we'd like to see that Simon is, uh, doing their share.
Thank you.
That's the CPA, I'm sorry.
All right, perfect. That's a good follow-up. I know Assistant Director Murphy raised the driveway, the Common Street, and so I know that the peer review for the traffic is taking a look at the exits from the mall onto Common and how that relates to the traffic impact, but I think that it's important that we have the conversation of what that looks like going through the mall also. Lakeside, we talked about a little bit with looking at the gate, but to the extent that stays a gate that's used for fire access, I'd like to see some signage or some proposal to make sure that Uber drivers, delivery drivers, all the food delivery, that those services are not using Lakeside. It doesn't appear, based on where the entrance is, that that's all that likely, but I would just like that looked at a little bit more to make sure that that's not going to be happening. Oh, and then another question that was raised was noise from the outside. My understanding is that our zoning bylaws prohibit noise over a certain limit after 10:00 PM, and I'd like to look at whether 9:00 PM is, seems appropriate to have with this project and the neighborhood. That was one of the, the issues raised in Swadlin's letter. I think, let me just have one second. And the construction plan for the access and the noise, I know that'll be a condition, that that'll be coming, but I'm sure that everybody's aware of being, you know, cautious with the neighborhood and the school with respect to what that looks like. And that is all that I have on my list, so. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for all the community work that was done prior to coming in here.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I guess with that, do you have anything else to add? We'll just do a motion to continue.
Yeah, if the board's comfortable with conditions, I can have them prepare for April if you would like to reveal them. I'm sure there will be further testimony in regards to those and further input from the board, but just given certain department staff and concerns focusing where to put
Yeah, I think it would be helpful to have the conditions, and that way, I know we have a lot of peer review materials coming in and hopefully coming in in time to take a look at them and understand them, but at least that way we can have a conversation with what they look like and how we can accommodate those.
I think that would be beneficial.
Okay. Great, thank you. And, excuse me, when we continue it, it will be a public hearing, so if anybody, anything that's been raised tonight, any other questions that come up, there will be an opportunity for the public to speak then. We do have a full agenda, so I'm going to move on to the next application for tonight, anyway. So with that, Connor, do you have the date of our April meeting?
I believe it's April 8th. Give me one second, please.
If you want to make it very quickly, we haven't officially continued yet.
And I'm sorry. And thank you for all the interest you're taking on behalf of the Abuddes. One important thing, oh, my name is Mary Andrews, and I live on Cotton Ave. One of the differences with that Hanover Crossing is that that opens up onto openland. Yes, it doesn't abut neighborhoods behind the buildings.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
At Hanover Crossing.
Right, okay.
Those buildings, the new builds down there, they abut openland, not neighborhood land, not houses.
Generally, I think that's right, but I haven't driven around there.
Yeah, it is. My father was on the planning board down there, worked with Jack Conway. We had both planning board members and firemen in the family, and I was wondering why this hasn't been moved more into the parking lot. It's not about the access gate. What is the accessibility to four-story building from behind in case of fire? Has our fire chief looked at these plans too?
Yes, we have had the fire chief take a look at it.
Okay, because it was a concern on stores ave, and that project was voted down because the accessibility wasn't there to get close to the buildings. It looks like there's quite a bit of fencing behind this building, and it is four stories, and that's a big concern because of the school. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you. All right, so with that, we'll be looking for a motion to continue to April 8th.
So move.
Motion by Member Kent, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member McComey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, does anybody need a quick break? Are we good? Good, good, okay. All right, and if I could just ask people to go to the hallway, I am going to call the next application here in a moment. So if the... Okay, all right, the next application on our agenda is 90 Catherine Drive. Planning Board File 2501. All right, all right. I think we're good. Assistant Director Murphy, if you can read the public notice, please.
Yes, ma'am, Chair. Notice is given by the planning board under provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Sections 9 and 11, and the Braintree Zoning Ordinance, Chapter 135, Articles 1, 5, 6, 7, 8, 11, and 14, that a public hearing will be conducted on Tuesday, March 11th, 2025, at 7:15 PM in the Braintree Town Hall. The planning board will consider an application for special permit, Section 135-603, in Site Plan Review filed by Patrick Campbell, applicant, for the construction of a 760-square-foot accessory structure with a 380-square-foot covered porch. The project also involves improvements to the site's landscaping, lighting, a swimming pool, along with associated grading. Property is located at 90 Catherine Drive, its own residence be within the watershed protection overlay district. Shown on the Braintree Zoners' map, 1056 is Plot 55, with a land area of 32,777 square feet.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, you can hear from the applicant. Thank you for your patience.
Oh, thank you. Michael Modestino representing the applicant, Pat Campbell. Pat Campbell is interested in purchasing property at 90 Catherine Drive in Braintree. He's been under agreement for that property for the past year, and he's done a lot of work trying to get it in order so that he might be able to purchase the property. Patrick lives in Braintree with his wife, Jamie, and three children. He lives at 61 Lee Haven Terrace. Unfortunately, it's a relatively small house and a lot, and he needs to have a bigger house, and he's been trying to do this for some time. We're looking at Site Plan Review under Section 135, Section 601, Comprehensive Plan. I think it's a good plan. We're talking about a lot that's three-quarters of an acre, and it is in the watershed district area, but variances have already been obtained. If we can understand what, what we're trying to do here, what my client's trying to do, he's applied for a special permit for a pool cabana, and it will serve as an accessory structure to the pool. My client hopes to build a house for his family and also build a pool on the property and a cabana and a three-car, three-vehicle garage. He obviously requires some special permits and requires some relief from the, from the planning board. There's also a retaining wall construction that would be, go on in the property. That will be constructed on the property with maximum height no more than seven feet high and four feet at the lowest. It will be built in full accordance with the local building codes and the zoning regulations. The applicant believes that the proposed development aligns with the character of the neighborhood and adheres to all Braintree zoning and use regulations. The applicant seeks approval for all necessary permits and is prepared to address any concerns during the review process by members of the Braintree Planning Board and the Department of Planning and Community Development. We, we, my client submitted a report from Hardy &amp; Mann Design, and that's part of the package that's been submitted. He will, my client will comply with all requirements that the town may set up. We have read the staff report from Connor Murphy, and we agree with the staff report. There is a proposed, uh, decision with conditions. I would point out that the Site Plan Review analysis, uh, there has to be, uh, access to the curb cut from Catherine Drive. There's other homes out there in that street. This will provide access to attached garage in front of the dwelling. The retaining wall, uh, which is going to be apparently up to 6.5 feet in height only, would be on the western lot side of the property, ingrated in a manner to reflect the proposed improvements of the property. Landscape features would include fences, walls, walks, and lighting. The plan reveals multiple, uh, trees and shrubs to be planted along the western and southern property lines, landscaping, including trees to be retained and some removed, but will be replaced if screening is required. The applicant is proposing three separate infiltration units within the front in rear yards. This will help deal with the, you know, possible water problems on the property, which my client does not believe there will be. Lighting, the applicant will submit details to any, on all lighting associated with the pool cabana area. The applicant will be required to apply for a minor stormwater permit from the Stormwater Division in addition to permitting from the Building Division. Applicant has provided an architectural set of plans that depict the proposed floor plan and the elevations of the property. Lastly, the applicant agrees with all, the general conditions is set forth in the proposed conditions that has been submitted with the as-built approval process, compliance with Health Division, drainage and erosion control, landscaping, construction, and assessing accessory structures and use of the property. So we believe that the application is, is good, and it's good for the family, and I think it's good for the neighboring community as well, and I would ask you to consider it. My client may want to say something as well.
I'm just happy, uh, questions, I can answer any questions that you may have. My name's Patrick Campbell, I live at 61 Lee Haven Terrace currently now, and I'm the applicant seeking approval.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll turn to staff, and we have a staff report and draft conditions. Anything else you want to bring up tonight?
Yeah, um, under 603A, we don't specifically call out pool cabanas, so we're subject to the special permit for it. I worked with Mr. Campbell on revising his height down to 20 feet. Given the ADU proposal that's before you tonight, we're suggesting, um, increased setbacks for accessory structures. He has complied with that amendment tonight. He'll have a 10-foot rear yard setback. His side yard setback's much greater than that, I believe it's over 20 feet. But generally, we've been working with, uh, Mr. Campbell for the better part, I want to say, a year now on getting this property permitted. He appeared before the zoning board of appeals once for lot size, um, came to you for endorsement in the ANR, went back to the zoning board of appeals for a set law coverage for the plans that are filed with you tonight. This is the last step towards, I believe, finalizing the purchase and sale and seeking building permits.
Okay, thank you. And is there anyone here in the public on 90 Catherine Drive? Okay. Member McComey, do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you. Looks like a, you know, a great design. My only two comments when I looked at the plans were, just as Assistant Director Murphy said, one is the setbacks. They looked real close, particularly the pool area. And secondly, uh, is the height of both the home and the cabana. We, um, had another project, uh, six to 12 months ago, and we made them cut it down. And Mr. Baker from Rockwood was also the architect, and he was here. You know, it was, um, down the street, literally, and it was, as the director, Assistant Director said, it was just too big. It was almost like we're having, you know, a warfare competition between neighbors in terms of how big they can make these accessory structures. So that, that would be my comment, both for the home and for the cabana. And then, obviously, um, as the director, Assistant Director also said, you know, dwelling unit situation, so, you know, we can't have any living in the cabana.
No, so I can definitely address that. So both, both structures are in compliance with the town zoning bylaws. The house is under 35 feet, um, and with the new ADU finding this, that'll be coming out today, which we mean, Connor spoke about extensively, um, the house and the pool cabana are both in compliance with those new laws that are coming forth. So the setback of that pool house is 10 feet off the property line. You know, the bylaws now say five, they're going to, they're going to be going to, I believe, eight. I know that's being voted on today, so I'm 10, and I'm under 20, 20 feet exact.
20, 20 feet for the cabana?
Exactly, yeah. So eight and 18, I believe, is what's being proposed. Um, I'm, um, within that range, I'm, you know, two feet out and two feet higher.
Yeah, it's just, it's just when you go around town, I mean, you're seeing some of these things, and it's like, whoa.
No, no. I, I get you. I truly feel that the design is in harmony with my neighbor. This is literally the neighborhood that I live in now. Like, I'm, I could almost throw a rock to the piece of property that I'm buying. I know all the neighbors, I've had discussions with all the neighbors. Everybody's pretty much for it, so.
Well, you know, you understand what we're trying to say, sir. I mean, look, it's, looks great, we want everybody to have great properties, build nice things, make it look good, but, you know, keep it within the context of the neighborhood. And, um, as I said, you know, the accessory structure thing is getting out of hand.
Yeah.
And, you know, other people have tried over the, over the years to put in, um, extra bedroom, in-law apartment, this and that, and, you know, we, we just, we're, you know, it's getting out of control.
No, I, I agree with you. And like I said, but with the state coming down with the new, you know, the ADU law and the compliance with that, it's, it, towns kind of have to fall into that. And like I said, with the compliance, um, with the new ADU structures that are going to be set forth with the town, I'm well in and under that. So we took a lot of time to consideration.
You agree with that, Mr. Modestino? Are you okay with everything he just said?
Yes, I am, and I mean, really, what this is for him is a home for his family for a long time.
Oh, I understand, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, this is where he's going to live for the next 20, 25 years or longer.
Yeah, no, we want people to be happy, but we just want it, you know.
I understand.
Yeah. Hit the criteria, so, thank you, ma'am chair.
Thank you. Member Kent?
Uh, yeah, just one question. I drove by, and, uh, there's the church parking lot there on the, on the one side, right?
Correct, yes.
And is there any issues with runoff or anything like that that has to be?
Runoff? So we, prior to this meeting, we, we came up with a full redesign of that parking lot. There's no, we, there's an extensive, uh, plan from Hardy &amp; Mann that protects the groundwater. We dug almost 15 feet, and we didn't even hit groundwater over there whatsoever. There was an issue, like, years back with one of the first neighbor down there. After that wooded lot, the first neighbor on the left, she said she had some runoff, but it had been corrected. It was, it was kind of from, like, the backside of the lot going into the backside, but with the retaining wall in the building and the house and the vegetation and the grading that we're proposing, it's going to mitigate all of that.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Member Kane?
Only question, well, first of all, beautiful.
Thank you.
Looks like a fun time. What, what is upstairs in the cabana?
Nothing. It's a, it's a single-story.
Oh, there's.
Yeah, that's just a vault, it's just a vaulted ceiling.
Door or something?
Yeah, there'll be nothing up there, it's just a vaulted ceiling.
Yeah, you'd bang your head off of just about any rack you got there.
Yeah, you wouldn't be able to get a second floor up there, which is kind of the point of auxiliary units, and, you know, you don't, there was a lot of thought that went into that, that thing. It wasn't just like, hey, let's throw something up, like, there was a lot of thought into that. Me and Connor went back and forth for a while about that, so we made it, you know, where it needed to be. There's no way there's ever going to be a second floor on it, so.
Sorry, second question was, where is the retaining wall?
Is it next to the pool?
Is it next to the pool?
Um, so, yeah, so if you're looking, I don't know which one you're looking at. If I get a feed on my. The retaining wall would be here.
Along the property line? No, you've had conversations with that neighbor?
Yeah, she's actually for it, to be honest with you.
So you're going to raise your property flat, flatten it out, is that what it is?
Yeah, so I can use that back half that, I guess it would be the southwest corner. Kind of drops off there, so we're going to raise it a little bit.
Okay. Engineer for that?
It's all engineered, yep.
All right, thank you. Member Kenahan?
It looks very nice. I'm in support of the conditions that Connor has put together for us.
Thank you. My only question, along the, I guess I'll call it the back, the rear side by the accessory building, is there a reason that you dropped down the arborvitae's? It goes from arborvitae's to fern where the building is?
Is there a reason why we did?
Yeah, instead of, it seems like the arborvitae would be a better screening, but I, I don't know if there was thought.
So there's, there's going to be a vinyl fence there as well, and then the arborvitae's will be in front of it, and we'll be just trying to break it up with different plantings. I'm open to whatever you, whatever you want. I'm not really picky, to be honest with you. I asked the landscape designer, she's like, what do you want? I'm like, I have no idea. You know what I mean? Make it, make it, you know, what it is for, for this area and just make it look nice. So I'm open to anything that you would want to change, but that's really the only reason.
Yeah, and I'm not a landscape engineer or architect either, just it seems like if that's the concern is the height, that it might be good to have the arborvitae's right there also. So that would just be my thought, if they could be continued along that, that side where it just has the, I don't know, number nine fern, might be helpful to the neighboring property.
Yeah, sure. I don't mind.
All right, there we go.
Yeah.
All right.
Easy enough.
So that, there's not any other questions, and I guess we'd be looking for a motion to approve the proposed draft decision with conditions.
Close the public hearing.
Thank you. That's what we need to do first. First, we're going to enter, we're going to look for a motion to enter the correspondence list.
So moved.
Okay. Motion by, was that you, Member, Member Kenahan? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, now we're going to have a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
By Member Kane. And do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Kenahan. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and now we'll be looking for a motion on the application.
Motion to approve?
All right. Member Kane, motion to approve with conditions. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Kent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. All right, the next item we have on our agenda is 125 Union Street, planning board file 2301. And have Assistant Director Murphy read the public notice.
Notice is given by the planning board under the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Sections 9 and 11, and the Braintree Zoning Ordinance, Chapter 135, Articles 1, 5, 6, 7, 8, 11, and 14, that a public hearing will be conducted on Tuesday, March 11th, 2025, at 7:15 PM in Braintree Town Hall. The planning board will consider an application for major modification, a special permit site plan review decision, number 23-01, filed by JBM Braintree LLC, applicant. The applicant is seeking the modified decision 23-01 for the construction of a 4,253 square foot restaurant slash fast food building and a 10,180 square foot building to consist of retail and fast food uses. The project also involves modifications to the site's landscaping, lighting, parking, drainage, floodplain, storage, and traffic. The property is located at 125 Union Street, Zone Highway Business District, with portions of the site in 100-year floodplain, Zone AE, shown on the Braintree Sustance Map, 1003, as plot three, with a land area of 2.07 acres.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Chair Crowell and members of the board, Frank Marinelli, for the record. And I know that some of the members are familiar with 23-01, and I, I think that Members Kane and Kenahan, maybe we can just give you a little background of the prior decision and what we're seeking to modify tonight. So for the record, I represent Torrington Properties and its related entities. Torrington is a premier commercial real estate developer. Their, their real estate portfolio is approximately 800 million with about 80 properties. And with me tonight is Sean Donahue. Sean is the senior project manager for, for the 125 Union Street site. And also here are members of our development team, Greg Debona from, from BOLA, and also Jeff Durk, our transportation engineer from, from VAI. Torrington purchased 125 Union Street almost three years ago in March of '22, and the approval 23-01 approved uses by right, a bank and a fast food that was Chick-fil-A at the time. Torrington invested approximately $9.8 million in acquisition, demolition, and performance of site work, demolition of the old Motel 6 in Bickfords, and to create the neat and clean and completed site work that you see now at the property. So there's a great investment that's sitting down there. And you see the before and after in the slides, I think, that we have up here. The, the before with the old Motel 6 and the after with the, the way that the two small buildings will look when we get above ground and are able to build them. It's a 2.07 acre site in the highway business zone, and it already, already looks 100% better just with the site work than the, the vacant blight that existed far too long at, at the site. The two-story Motel 6 in Bickfords was over 40,000 square feet of building mass, and Chick-fil-A terminated their interest in the site last September. The revised building program tonight, again, they're all uses by right, two small, attractive one-story buildings totaling just over 14,000 square feet. So the easterly building will be 4,251 square feet. That'll host a use-by-right restaurant or fast food. And then the westerly pad will have a combination of the bank and retail and fast food or restaurant, and that's about 10,180 square feet, the westerly pad. The modified redevelopment will include hundreds of plantings, robust landscaping where none previously existed at that site. The prior use of the motel and the restaurant had building coverage of 23% of the site. And, and our building coverage is going to be just 14.1%. So, you know, it's a little over half of what existed for decades at the site. Previously concerning zoning, there were non-conforming site and front yard setbacks with the Motel 6 Bickfords blight. Now with this redevelopment, we've cured that. The, the modified project, the front and side setbacks conform with zoning. Previously, the, the motel and the restaurant had non-conforming lot coverage above 75% and they had non-conforming open space less than 25%. We cure all that. We have, we comply with the lot coverage, we comply with the open space, and as you can see from the exhibits, there are some 700 plantings that are, that are going to be installed. The shape of the lot, as you can see, is highly irregular. The frontage on Union Street is over 443 feet, and the lot depth is just 184 feet. So the lot is long and comparatively narrow, but it's ideal for drive-through stacking on the site, the way that it's oriented with the drive-throughs. The site is bordered by the Manadequod River and Wetlands floodplain to the east, and to the west you have the frontage on Ivory Street. All of the abutting properties, the MBTA across the street, Grossman Drive, are commercial uses. There's no residential abutters at all. To construct the easterly building, the 4,251 square foot building that you see, we have a 34.3 rear yard setback instead of 50. And to construct the westerly pad, because of the shape of the lot, we have a 38-foot rear yard instead of 50 feet. Those, that relief was granted by the zoning board on February 24th, and even with that relief, the setbacks that we have are three times what the setbacks were with the motel and, and the restaurant. So even though less than 50, significantly greater than what previously existed. And the rear yard abutter is the town landfill, so it's not a business or a commercial property of any sort. Also, based upon the parking study of VAI and the platooning of peak hours for the bank and retail and food uses, the zoning board approved the current plan at 94 parking spaces, which also considers the fact that you have a drive-through for the bank, you have a drive-through for the easterly pad, people will use the drive-throughs with the parents with young children, older folks, disabled, people will use the drive-throughs rather than park. So the 94 spaces was deemed acceptable in accordance with the, the parking study that was provided and the, the, the number that was set by the zoning board on February 24th. The modifications tonight, we believe are reasonable in comparison to the easterly building that was going to be Chick-fil-A, was approved in 2301 as a 5,225 square foot building. This one, the easterly building's a bit smaller at 4,251. On the westerly side, the bank in the prior approval was 2,500 square feet. It's a little smaller now, but the westerly pad is, is larger with 10,180 square feet, but it all fits and it's, as I said, the building mass is significantly smaller than what previously existed at the site. At the westerly building, we currently have letters of intent from CAVA and from Brookline Bank. So that, CAVA is in one of those pads that you see in the westerly building, and then Brookline Bank is the end unit, the most westerly one. The, the site plan has zoning compliance, there's no special permit uses, the occupancy will be based upon market demand. I know that Torrington is anxious to get out of the ground and get above ground this spring and build the buildings, and we're very confident that the space will fill. The most important change is that with this modified layout, there is 44% less vehicle trips than would be generated by Chick-fil-A. And that's all in the traffic report that, that Jeff Durk has filed. Jeff will speak to that. Notwithstanding the change and the, the fact that Chick-fil-A won't be occupying, but 44% less vehicle trips, we're still going to be making all of the off-site improvements to the intersection that were part of the prior approval. And that includes, as Jeff will describe, a complete redo of the Union-Grossman-Ivory Street intersection. And then we'll also have the installation of a sidewalk on the easterly side of Ivory Street, so that will provide pedestrian connectivity all the way down to the light where the recycling center is, so that folks that are going to or from the site, to or from the MBTA can come across Ivory Street, Ivory Street at that point, rather than the more complicated Union-Grossman-Ivory intersection they can cross, walk down on the easterly sidewalk, which will be installed as part of this, of this development. If you're heading, if you're heading westbound on Union Street and you want to access the site, you will come to the light, the major set of lights, and you'll be directed to take a left turn to the, to the, to the site. And when you get down about halfway, Jeff can correct me, I'm, I'm not a layperson, but it looks like on the plan it's about halfway down to the recycling light, there'll be a reverse turn lane, and you can pull into that lane, you can reverse your travel and come back, and you can go in a curb cut, which is right there at Ivory Street, or you can continue around to Union Street and go in the existing curb cut there. So that's, that's the plan in terms of, of the off-site improvements and continuing that investment off locus in, in conjunction with all of the improvements that we're making on the site. So at this point, I think that Greg, our, our civil engineer, will talk about the, the wetlands, the floodplain, and, and any kind of stormwater drainage questions that you might have, and then Jeff will talk about the revised traffic and the significant reduction in the vehicle trips. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry about that. Yeah, sorry.
No, it's all right. I was just going to say, B-CAM can't pick up the site over there, so if you can move the easel to the other side if the TV's not working.
Like, over this way?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
That just makes it easier for their video. Okay, all right, never mind. He says we're good. He's the expert. Thank you.
Yeah, unfortunately, I'm sorry about that. It's, it looks like it's connecting and then it's just not showing up on screen, so who knows, maybe this will magically work. Sorry, Greg Debona with BOLA. Good to see you all again. At least you have the handout in front of you, so what I'm referring to now is our new proposed site plan and the colorized rendering. So, so, you know, big picture, when I look at this site now, there's some, there's some improvements that have occurred with this opportunity for redesign. And I'll, I'll touch on those and then also just briefly talk about things like the not-so-fun components like grading and stormwater and flood hazard, which is the technical side of things. But if you recall, in the prior application, everything we had as far as access was limited to our, our main driveway at Union Street. And we actually talked a couple times about, could we provide another access in from Ivory? And it, and it really didn't work because of the tenant we have with Chick-fil-A, and it was, it was too disruptive to their drive-through queue and their circulation. Now with this new layout and we're, we're kind of accommodating more flexibility with future tenants and tenants that aren't going to be as heavily driven on a drive-through use and needing such a substantial amount of real estate for drive-through queuing, we're able to now add the secondary entrance point from Ivory, which we think is really a great addition to the site layout and circulation. This new layout also does provide roughly 14 more parking spaces. We're up at 94 spaces from what we had before. So even though we added, you know, more retail, we also were able to add more parking and circulation. Some of the perks that we talked about last time was the fact that we are bringing the site into conformance on the open space and the impervious coverage. And that's still the same condition now with this new layout. We're still at 75% of impervious coverage and 25% of open space. The fact that roughly 90% of the site infrastructure was already in the ground today, if you, I'm sure you've seen the site over the past year under construction, all those stormwater improvements have already been put in place. They're already there. We're really just ready to go, waiting for the, the final layout now and top course to be put in pavement. So we did provide updated stormwater narratives, we provided updated flood hazard narratives to basically show that we're still making the same improvements that we made the first time around, and we're still improving the, the site conditions over what was there previously. We still meet the conditions of the flood hazard regulations and are still proposing our new finished floor elevations a foot above the flood hazard. So from that standpoint, from the technical side, you know, we're, we're really doing what we need to do to maintain what was, what was presented previously and doing it in a way that now we're really accommodating more flexibility on the site for future tenants and really a longer, I'd say longevity of the site as things may change over time. I did want to talk a little bit about just the landscaping. We still have over 700 new plantings going in on the site, so substantial amount of landscaping, still looking for a nice green escape along the whole frontage. And, and again, you know, focusing on that circulation of the pedestrian connectivity from Ivory, from Union into the site, into the frontage along the, the mix- from Union into the site, into the frontage along the mixed-use retail and fast-food-type tenants, as well as connectivity to the freestanding restaurant and/or fast-food tenant. And really, you know, I think at this point, we have basically letters and support from the professionals, basically acknowledging that the changes we've made are still technically sound and still meet the conditions that we basically agreed to previously. And certainly, I could go on more about the site improvements, but I think it might be more beneficial just to kind of move on and talk about the traffic changes.
That sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this up here, Jeff, in case it helps you in any way.
You can take it.
Okay, you don't need it.
I'll accidentally hit something. It'll go right. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, Jeffrey Dirk with Vineson Associates, the transportation consultants on the modification as well as the prior project. And I think I'd just like to focus on the differences between the current proposal and the proposal that was approved. And I think just before I get into that, some of the benefit that has happened since the approval to where we are now with the modification is a lot of the questions that the board had specifically relating to obtaining approvals through the state, both through the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act processes. You might recall, we were subject to a filing of an environmental notification form as well as a single environmental impact report. Those have all been done for this site and approvals issued. And beyond that, the Department of Transportation has also reviewed all of the improvements, not just the work that we are planning to undertake along Route 3, but also as it relates to the Union Street Rotary and looking at how the improvements at the signalized intersection with Ivory Street affects traffic flow within the Union Street Rotary. So the state has had an opportunity to review all of that. In fact, we've moved on to preparing design plans, almost to the final design plans for that work. So I think it's something to say that what you've approved, what's also a part of this application, is not only approved by the town once, now the state has approved it and is ready to issue permits to allow us to get onto the state highway to undertake the lengthening of the Route 3 off-ramp. As you might recall, we were lengthening the deceleration lane on the southbound ramp, so permits are ready to be issued for that work. Your own town departments, as well as your review consultant, have fully reviewed the engineering design plans for the intersection improvements. So those have also been brought forth as well. And when we undertook the analysis for the modification, we took all of that work that's already been done and analyzed it now as well. So what you have in front of you, as you look at the Article 14 compliance, which was the primary items that we had discussed for the approved project, has been completely updated to reflect what's been approved by the state as well as the town and what we currently have permits to construct. So it's kind of a proving out of the work that we're actually ready to construct at the intersection itself. So in looking at the Article 14 compliance, it's probably not surprising that, as you heard Attorney Mary Nellie mention, the traffic numbers have come down during, on a daily basis, on a Saturday daily basis, as well as on the weekday evening and Saturday midday peak hour. So there's a drop in traffic. There is an increase in traffic during the morning peak hour, and the reason for that is Chick-fil-A is not open. So as you look at a comparison between the approved project and what's currently before you, we have an increase in the morning peak hour just because of the fact that we had one use that was not open. But during the weekday evening, Saturday midday, dramatic reductions in traffic. And what we pointed out during that morning hour, when we actually have an increase over what you had seen before, is the traffic on Union Street, on Ivory Street, is actually 23% lower than the volumes that occurred during the weekday evening and the Saturday midday. So as we look at that increase in traffic as a result of the project, but the baseline numbers that we're adding traffic on are lower, and so when you look at the analysis, we're making sure that those high-traffic-volume periods, the evening and the Saturday when the volumes are at their highest level, that's when we've designed the improvements to function. So if they function at an appropriate level during those high-peak time periods, they'll function appropriately when we have lower traffic volume. So that was kind of our conclusion as it relates to that. But looking at the Article 14 compliance, and I know you're very familiar with the criteria, so Condition A is where we look at any changes in level of service that might occur as a result of the project. So in looking at all of the intersections that we've evaluated, the current proposal versus the prior proposal, there's a reduction in the number of intersections where we have an exceedance. So we still have exceedances, but instead of having four intersections where we had exceedances, now we're down to three, and we're still delivering the same level of mitigation. There's no changes to the mitigation that we had previously proposed at those locations. So, you know, with a reduction, we're certainly less impactful, and we have less exceedances of Article 14, and we're delivering the same mitigation measures to address those areas where we did have a reduction in traffic. And for those board members that may not have been a part of the hearings, the mitigation involves a wholesale reconstruction of the Ivory Street-Union Street-Grossman Drive intersection to deal with a bunch of issues relating to safety but also mobility. And we spent a lot of time talking about the fact that, from a pedestrian's perspective, it's an extremely very uninviting intersection. And so the introduction of a crosswalk across Ivory Street was a central part of the mitigation, but also the Grossman Drive crosswalk, there's no push buttons and there's no signal indication. So it's not something that we would ever design. We're bringing all of those into the intersection, as well as bringing everything up to full ADA compliance. So there's a significant mobility improvement. One of the other parts of the mobility improvement is what's known as a leading pedestrian interval. So as you push the push button, when it's your turn to walk, you get three seconds to get off the curb and start to go in the crosswalk before anything else happens at the intersection. And the intent of that is to get you out to a point where a motor vehicle might be able to see you before traffic starts moving at the intersection. So again, that was a safety improvement that's being undertaken. The other things that might not be as apparent as you look at the design plans was some public safety aspects. So the police department asked that we install, I believe, two what's known as FLOCK cameras. So these are cameras, just given the location of the intersection to the Route 3 interchange. It allows the police department to actually read license plates. So if for some reason there was an incident in the town and they wanted to track that motor vehicle and see if they got onto Route 3, they're able to activate these cameras and actually see what's going on, so they can track vehicles if they need to, to the extent that there's an incident. There's also a 360-degree mountable camera up there where they can do the pan tilt-a-zoom that allows them to monitor not only intersection operations, but again, they can look at Route 3, see if there's congestion, and then kind of react to it. So it's not necessarily something to address capacity enhancements, but it's a safety enhancement that the police department had asked us to undertake at the intersection. At the other signalized intersections that we analyzed, we are undertaking some traffic signal timing improvements. With all of those measures in place, what we've demonstrated is we at least achieve a no-harm condition, so the conditions are not any worse than when we started or prior to the construction of the project. But in fact, what you'd see is there's actually betterments, betterments in traffic flow, reductions in vehicle queuing. And I think one of the untangible things that you see from the analysis, or that you won't see in the analysis, is the significant safety and mobility benefits that come from that as well. So in looking at Condition B of Article 14, that's where we look at traffic volume increases along roadways, rather than looking at capacity and levels of service. So when we compare the approved project to what's currently before you, the number of exceedances of Condition B goes from three to one. And if you recall, previously, we were only having exceedances during the Saturday midday peak hour. That still occurs, and the only location where we have an exceedance is the section of Ivory Street between the Union Street intersection and the U-turn pocket. And the reason we have that exceedance, and it's only we have, we're allowed to increase volumes by no more than 10%, the volumes increased by 10.2% during the Saturday midday peak hour, still a reduction from what we had before. And the reason why the volumes increased there is because as vehicles are traveling from Union Street and they want to get into the site, they turn left at the signal, as you heard our attorney mention, they will travel approximately 200 feet down Ivory Street, get into a U-turn pocket, and then make the U-turn. So the vehicle travels that same stretch of road twice. So we have to count that vehicle two times on that stretch of road, so that increases that volume to make us exceed that 10% threshold by .2%. The mitigation measures to address the traffic volume increases are measures that are designed to reduce that traffic volume. It's the same transportation demand management measures that we had discussed before. Nothing has changed as it relates to how we're going to implement those as a part of the project to bring ourselves in compliance with it. And again, we're .2% over the 10%, and only during the Saturday midday peak hour. So turn it back over to Ryan. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. We've been working with the staff, Madam Chair, members of the board, and as I stated, we're anxious to get into the site and come above ground, create the buildings, and they're very attractive, very modest uses by right. There are some conditions from 2301 that will have to be revised accordingly because, you know, this is, doesn't have the same impact. So we would propose to work with staff and submit, Jeff has some revisions that he's proposed to the traffic-related conditions of 23-01. We would compile those and submit those to Mr. Murphy for consideration and hopefully come up with a, an agreed set of draft conditions for the next meeting, if that's something the board could entertain.
Okay, thank you. Turn it over to staff now for any comments on that, too.
Quickly, we've been working with the applicant for probably three months now on a revised development program for this parcel. We've made some suggestions in regards to their internal drive aisles and the site's operations with the drive-through. We feel that the addition of the curb cut along Ivory Street is a positive to this development. We do have two of our peer reviewers in attendance tonight, if they may come up and present. If we could start with Mr. Greg Lucas from Time Bond, who overviewed the Article 14 compliance from the applicant.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Greg Lucas from Time Bond. We've been the traffic peer reviewer for the project throughout, including the previous Chick-fil-A development. And so we had an opportunity to review the Article 14 memorandum prepared by Jeff Durk and VAI and would agree with the, you know, the summary that's been given already by Attorney Marinelli and by Jeff, noting that there is a noted reduction in traffic compared to the prior development because of the change in use and specifically because of the elimination of the high demand Chick-fil-A, fast-food use. We had some comments on that memo and some peer review comments on that memo and on the site plans. We received responses and additional information from VAI and from Bowler, were satisfied with those responses. And so in general, overall, as was mentioned, less daily traffic, less traffic in the critical weekday evening and Saturday midday peak hours, a little bit more traffic in the weekday morning because of the breakfast use, but at a time when there is less traffic on the road, the mitigation is still whole from what was previously proposed with the reconstruction of the Union-Ivory intersection and with the monitoring also of traffic after the site is occupied. Happy to answer any questions as they come up.
Great, thank you so much for your work on this.
Thank you.
And Mr. Dais?
For the record, Eric Dais, Registered Professional Engineer, Strong Point Engineering, reviewing the stormwater. So from a stormwater review perspective, pretty straightforward. We have, you know, the benefit that we have is, I think, is, as Greg said, about 90% of this system's already in the ground. So we know what the asbel condition is. We know how it's functioning, at least to date, and there's no reported issues with it. So, and we've already worked out a lot of the kind of minutia details during the prior review. So at this point, it's really for us to confirm that we're not going to overwhelm what's there. So the way we do that is we look at the contributing watershed areas, are the areas bigger? We look at the amount of impervious surfaces that are going to the area, and we find them to be very comparable. There's a slight increase in the amount of impervious surface on the site, and I believe it's due to the new connection from the side street. At the same time, there's also an area on site that was proposed to be drive-through that's now being turned into landscape area, so that's going to help to offset that as well. So we did run the numbers, checked all of the calculations, had a little bit of back-and-forth between Greg and I today with Connor copied on the emails, and we were able to clear up any questions we had. We were able to issue a letter right around 5:00. I don't know if it made its way to the board. They said that we're satisfied with our review.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yep, he was on top, but we got a copy, so thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, all right. So this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here for 125 Union Street? This is a major modification? Okay, all right. Turn to the board, comments, questions. Member McCamey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Certainly relieved that Chick-fil-A is not coming for many reasons. And while, you know, we've modified the plan, I still think we need to be very careful about the traffic. Even though they've redesigned it, you're going to have multiple new tenants, we simply don't know what the impact is, and we cannot afford to tie up Union Street, Ivory Street, every street, which was the major problem with Chick-fil-A. So I just have a few questions. I'll just ask Mr. Marinelli. I see in the block of the new, the revised building, I thought there was only going to be one fast food. There's going to be two fast-food locations plus two retails and a bank? I guess I missed that. I thought there was only going to be one fast food.
Yeah, so there's the bank, there's 2,000, there's 3,900 square feet of retail and then 4,000 square feet of fast-food service or restaurant. So we had to characterize it as fast food or restaurant because you don't know what something is going to be considered under the zoning bylaws that we have. As you know, the definition of fast food in our zoning bylaws is 40% or more pretty much out the door, and that can be any takeout restaurant at this point. You know, I mean, we all, I'm sure, do takeout or DoorDash, and so we had to label those spaces fast food or restaurant depending upon whether, name the use, whether it's, you know, Cava or Shake Shack or even Chateau with the degree of takeout is a restaurant or fast food. It creates a real concern when you're developing and you feel that, you know, somebody may say something about parking that really doesn't apply. So we characterized it both ways. We got the relief that was necessary to set the parking and so forth. But, you know, those are all uses by right in the highway business zone. And, you know, to Jeff's point and your point, all of the improvements are going to be made to the intersection. From what Jeff pointed out, the intersection really needs upgrading, and Torrington's going to spend over $1 million between doing over the entire intersection and putting in a sidewalk. So we're confident that it's all going to work. There are two drive-throughs. I mean, the Chick-fil-A had a double drive-through, this doesn't. This is one drive-through around the 4,251-square-foot building, and it's a drive-through around the bank. So, you know, I mean, I think whatever the concern is, if it's, if it's, if it's, these uses are platooning in terms of peak hours, Jeff can speak more to that, but they, the retail doesn't have the same peak hours as the fast food, which doesn't have the same peak hour as the bank. So it is all going to work, and it's significantly less building mass than what we had down there with the whole use of the prior restaurant.
I mean, with the redesign, again, my point is, we're just going to have to see what happens with the traffic. I don't know. I mean, I understand, I respect Mr. Durk. I still, I want to see it.
Well, like Jeff said, it will be monitored and, you know, Jeff, time signals, et cetera.
And we also, because I recommended it, a condition... And we also, a, I, because I recommended it, a condition in the, I don't know if it survives, but gives us the ability to, you know, change business hours depending on the traffic if there's going to be an impact. So I still think we need to do everything we can to protect, you know, the traffic situation for everyone here in Braintree.
Yeah, I think that was one that we were hoping to get away from because it was really, we certainly.
I'm sorry, I'm going to, I'm going to re-recommend it because we, we just, we have to protect ourselves. This affects too many intersections, and we just simply do not know. And in my opinion, it's better to be safe than sorry, you know? So anyway, what I'd point out, Mr. Marinelli, is, at least on this chart I'm looking at, I do not see a drive-through here on the bank side. I'm just looking at this colorful drawing because it's easy to look at, so I just point that out. And... I'm sorry? You have to be to the microphone, sir.
Sean Donnie with Torrington Properties. So the far left side of that five retail building, there is one pass-through lane on the, what's that, south, farthest south corner, and then there's one other lane directly next to the bank.
Okay. And Mr. Marinelli, can you, I know you mentioned Kava, Shake Shack's been in the news. Can you identify where potentially, you know, whoever, whatever tenants that Torrington has talked to, where they might locate?
Sean, you want to go through that?
Sean Donnie, Torrington Properties, again. I can't at this time. I can tell you, we're at the 11th hour with the final tenants. We have obviously signed LOIs with the bank and Kava, and I was hoping to have the remaining LOI signed and presented tonight, but I don't yet, and I'm hoping in the next week or so have that. At that time, I'm happy to share, and I would say definitely by the next meeting that we'll have that.
I think it'd be just kind of nice to know, to get a common sense idea about, you know, the flow and where people are going to be. And this question, Madam Chair, maybe for the staff, but do we have control over how many seats might be in a sit-down food location?
As a municipality, we do through our licensing board and our parking regulations. So the applicant's proposing fast food, they can back in the restaurant based on the number of seats. We require one parking space for every three and a half seats, and that's what they've done with the further fast food restaurant building to the east, budding the wetland. If they were to have another fast, or restaurant tenant come into one of those demising fast food spaces within the retail building.
So that building you feel is fully covered for the number of potential seats that they might have?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And, but the other two locales remains to be seen how many seats might be proposed?
So fast food's parked at one space per 100 square feet.
Okay.
So restaurant isn't done by square footage, so it's done by restaurant seats. So for example, this part here at the end is 2,500 square feet, requires 25 spaces. One space for every three and a half seats, you know, do the math, they could have a well over 70-seat restaurant there, based on the parking layout.
All right. All I'm going to say is wow.
Yeah. I don't think they have the square footage to make 70-plus seats work, but...
70 seats and you've cut down the number of parking spaces. So Mr. Marinelli, how many parking spaces did you get relief from? So you got 94.
Yeah.
How many theoretically would you, would you have had?
Exactly to the point Connor is making.
Yep.
You have a 2,500 square foot space, let's take that as an example. Under the conservative, almost over the top requirement of fast food, you've got 25 spaces you have to allocate to that.
Right.
But you would never reach the 25 spaces on a one space for three and a half seats analysis because that would be well over 75 seats in a small area. So we did it with a more conservative formula, and if you applied that across the board, we would have needed 114. So the relief under a very conservative formula was, was 20, was 94, but it's based upon people in the drive-through not using parking, the differences in timing of peak hours, and the fact that if you have a predominantly sit-down use, even though something like Panera, for example, has significant takeout, it's got sit-down, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have 100 seats in a 2,500 square foot section, which is yet, would be calculated at one per, for 3.5 seats, but we've already done the more conservative analysis at one per 100. So in, to some respects, the parking was overstated and, and it was adjusted appropriately.
Okay. Well, I guess my point would simply be we need to monitor the number of seats, and obviously since, since the ZBA has granted you relief from, for at least 20 spaces, we need to, you know, monitor the parking in addition to the, you know, the traffic and the flow, et cetera.
Well, it was 20, it was no more than 20.
Okay.
At, at most, it was 20.
Yeah, I, it just, when I hear they could put in, let's say you put in 50 seats.
Yeah, I think down in South Braintree, we have a request for like 50 seats, you know, 50 space variants.
Now, now you got two, two spots plus two retail, so again, I, you know, I'm, I'm not trying to, all I want to do is make sure that we protect everybody.
So if you look at the customary thing, and Sean can speak to this, like the retail sections, are you going to have a mattress sleep member? Are you going to have a Verizon or a T-Mobile store? Doesn't get it, you know, people come in all different times.
It's just speculation until we find out.
Well, yeah, I mean, but you can't permit something based upon, you know, saying you need to have a certain tenant. I mean, these are, that's, that's pretty much a violation of uniformity because it's like, this.
Well, I mean, flexibility for retail I could see, but my concern is just the fast food places and sit-down, again, the same thing, so. I just want to move on a little bit here. When I'm looking at the circulation and you have this center pathway, if you will, so you could come in and then go straight forward and encounter the stop sign and obviously then, you know, take a left to the other restaurant. So I just want to make sure, so on this one, because it's not identified, you're saying people can come around, stop there at the end, and then make a left-hand turn to go out? Is that, is that, is that kind of why that's there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Site operates through a counterclockwise flow of traffic onsite. People can come in from Ivory, go all the way down to the intersection you just pointed out, internal. They can go take a left, then take another left, access to retail and fast food in the front towards Union Street, or they can go straight where they're broken up into two lanes, one lane to access to parking fields in front of the fast food restaurant, another lane to access the drive-through that encompasses the building.
Okay, okay. Just want to make sure. Okay, I don't think I have anything else, Madam Chair. As I, as I stated, I think we should take, given our history with this site, a very conservative approach in terms of traffic monitoring and protecting, you know, the flow of traffic for, for everybody here in town. I like the new curb cut. We'll see what the other improvements do. I'm sure, I'm sure that they'll help. Not having more intensive tenant there is going to help, but I, I still think we should be very conservative. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Kent?
Just a couple of things. I recall the, under the old plan, the two lanes for takeout was something like 66 spaces or something like that. It's been a year or so, but, and the, the point is, this is, what, 18 or 20 spaces lineup for cars?
Oh, in terms of the stacking capacity for the drive-through?
Yeah, right.
Stacking capacity is still very significant in terms of keeping people off of Union Street or Ivory Street, you know, on, on the.
But the actual lane for the takeout would be, I'm looking at the map here, like 20 cars or something instead of 66?
Before, before the...
Sorry, Greg with Bowler again. Yeah, you're right. If you're in the drive-through queue, you're probably about 18, 18 spaces worth of stacking distance from the pickup window back to the intersection.
And, and we have a tenant for this, they're, they're comfortable with the 18 spaces as opposed to the 66, and just as an aside, because it's getting late.
That's correct.
If I were 33rd in line for Chick-fil-A, I think I'd have gone to Shaw's up the street and grabbed some in the counter there, but, you know, 18 is enough?
Yeah, absolutely 18 would be enough for any tenants that we would be putting in that restaurants last, fast food user. And it won't be Chick-fil-A.
Right.
And, and this does account for the ability, if somebody does pull into the site and there's a long drive-through queue, you can still get in the lane to get right into the parking area. So if you don't want to wait in the drive-through queue, you have an ability to bypass that and get right into the parking field.
And then in the morning, when the traffic, when the trips increase, that would be mostly, I assume, coming east on Union from Braintree and north on Ivory also from Braintree, as opposed to people coming off the highway and going around to get a, whatever is going to be available there.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. All right, thanks. That's it.
Thank you, Member Kane.
Just two questions. The first is, am I right to read this as, is that a dumpster to the right of the smaller fast food?
That's correct. That, behind the, the retail is the dumpster pad enclosure, which would service the entire facility.
That was going to be the question, yeah. And then the second one is, is to the right of that, is that the signage for the site on the other side of the intersection?
No, the, sorry, in that little landscape island, you see like a square? That's the transformer pad.
Okay. Is there signage for this property?
We have a, we have a monument sign right up by the entranceway of, of Union. It's kind of, it's shown right in that little landscape island on the first island. It's, it's the same sign that we were proposing last time.
Okay.
Yeah, because that, maybe I didn't really state it, but that intersection to Ivory, I'm sorry, to Union, that's exactly the same spot where it was, that's already been built out there, so none of that would be changing. So the curb opening and everything that's been installed, that, that stays exactly where it is.
Thank you. Member Kane?
Yeah, I have a question in regards to the Ivory Street turnaround. So I believe it was stated that's about 200 feet from the turnaround back to the entrance, is that right?
To the, so it's 200 feet from the intersection to the entrance to the pocket, so where you would start to turn, transition your vehicle to get into the lane. The opening is actually about 420 feet to where you actually make the U-turn. The distance is set typically, the way you design follow-on intersections is when you look at the, you want the length of the storage of the queue on Union Street, that's roughly about 200 feet. So if you have that full of cars, you want to turn that full 200 feet around the intersection before you open up another pocket. So it's purposely 200 feet of storage transitions to 200 feet of distance on Ivory Street, the left turns the turn and then get into the U-turn pocket, and then the actual opening is 420 feet to where the turn is. When we did the analysis, the maximum queue in that lane is two vehicles. So the storage, so the storage of that lane, you can fit six vehicles. So if you look at the actual distance to the back of the two vehicles, it's probably about 300 to 350 feet to where you would encounter a vehicle in that lane.
Okay. And then after you make the turn?
Right.
The distance from there to the entrance? It looks to be, I guess, around 200 based on the, the scale?
Yeah, it's just about, so it's roughly about that distance, you're correct, from where the opening is. So if we looked at, if you measured from the crosswalk to where the little taper is to get into the lane, that's about 200 feet. So if I kind of flip that distance from where you make the U-turn to the driveway, it's pretty close, so that might be a little bit more, but yes.
Is there any concern with that distance? If Ivory Street becomes more developed in order to, making that turn and then getting over a lane and to make that turn into the entrance, do you have any concern with, with that?
No, there's actually enough distance between there when you make the turn because as you wait, you have to have a gap in traffic to make the turn. So you actually, you'd have to have a gap in both of those lanes to get over. So you're actually turning into the curb-side lane when you make that, and physically to make the turn, your vehicle has to be in that, you have to turn toward the curb and be in that lane. So, and you're probably going, you know, maybe 15, 20 miles an hour tops by the time you reach that driveway because you don't have enough distance to accelerate. So there is enough distance to actually do that versus a high-speed type of maneuver. We also have the benefit because of the signal at the MBTA driveway is creating some gaps.
Right, okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you for going over all the different aspects of it and the peer reviewers for getting back to us so quickly. I don't have any questions with the site. I was pleased to see that the traffic upgrades were still being included, even with the drop in the traffic counts. For a logistical suggestion, Attorney Marinelli, you mentioned that Mr. Dirk would have some comments on the prior conditions for the traffic, and I don't know what works best between you and staff, but, you know, perhaps if we got a Word document and they submitted a red line of what they thought worked, and that way it'll just streamline the review process to come up with what makes sense for the next meeting.
That's what we'll do. We'll send in a compilation of the comments and suggestions that we have on, on any revisions and hear back from the staff and the board and hopefully have a document for April 8th.
Okay. Yeah, anything else on your end?
No, that's it.
All right. That's, looking for a motion to continue to April 8th.
So moved.
Motion by Member Kane, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Kent, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right. We're going to move into 589 and 601 Granite Street, major modification. Apologize for the delays, thank you for being patient, just give a minute to get settled here. All right, Assistant Director Murphy, when you're ready, read the public notice.
Notice given by the planning board under the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Sections 9 and 11, and the Braintree Zoning Ordinance, Chapter 135, Articles 1, 5, 6, 7, 8, 11, 14, that a public hearing will be conducted on Tuesday, March 11th, 2025, at 7:15 PM in Braintree Town Hall. The planning board will consider an application for major modification, special permit, site plan review decision 11-02 filed by Leo Ketka, applicant. The applicant's project involves constructing an outdoor patio with rooftop to the existing building. The project also involves improvements to the site's landscaping, lighting, along with associated grading. Property is located at 589 and 601 Granite Street, is zone commercial and residence B within the Watershed Protection Overlay District, shown on the Braintree Assessors Map, 2048 as plot 14, 14D, 15B, with a land area of 64,745 square feet.
Okay, thank you. The applicant?
Good evening. Michael Modestino representing the applicant, Leo Ketka. I would explain that Mr. Ketka called me this afternoon and he was not well, and he's usually, works through everything, and he couldn't really make it tonight, and I wanted to go forward without him, if that's okay?
Yes, yes, that's okay on my end, for sure.
Thank you. So this is the property at, at where Dunkin' Donuts University had been, Dunkin' Donuts College, I think they call it. As you know, there was a major modification, special permit, site plan review in 2023. Since then, Mr. Ketker has purchased the property and he's trying to move forward with this property. This is an application for a major modification of a special permit, site plan review, modification decision, and really all he's looking for is to build this area, an outdoor patio. really, all he's looking for is to build this area, an outdoor patio, seating area outside where the function room is going to be. And the reason that he wants to do that is that he plans on trying to run functions at this place, weddings, things of that nature. And he would like to be able to have this patio with a roof on it. It's about 500 square feet altogether. It does come within 3.6 feet of the drive area that comes in there, which is the Dunkin' Donuts Boulevard, I think it's called. And it's a major modification as such, but we're not looking for a heck of a lot of relief. I think that the planning staff has looked at it. I will let them speak about it. I have Dana Altobello here from Merrell, and he would like to explain something about the layout and explain some of the background of this. Ready?
Good evening. My name is Dana Altobello with Merrell Engineers and Lancer Vares. As Attorney Modestino mentioned, currently on site, there's the existing Dunkin' Donuts University, which is approximately 14,000 square feet. And we're just looking at adding a small, it's a 14 by 45, or 16 by 45 addition in this area. And then we're proposing a patio in this area in front of it just to support the existing or the proposed function hall with inside. Currently, there's, you know, as approved, there's an existing walkway that enters up to the existing entrance as it was shown originally and approved. This new patio will provide, you know, a new entrance to the new front of the building. There's an existing set of stairs that goes to the current front entry to the building, which is kind of over, off of the, kind of the front area in this area over here. That will be removed and replaced with the new previous paper patio, which is shown in gray, kind of in this area here. So we're just proposing to enclose some of that with the new addition and the patio itself will be covered at certain points, you know, over it. But as we're showing right now, it'll just be an exposed previous paper patio. All of the runoff from the new roof and the patio area will be directed to the subsurface patio, previous paper infiltration system. This system has been designed to contain and infiltrate all of the runoff up to and including the 100 year storm event. We have proposed some new lighting within the parking area, just along the perimeter. Some of the existing lighting will be relocated. We have included a photometric plan, which shows the lighting in this area out to the property lines. We've kept it as dim as we can. Currently at the property line kind of down over in this area, there's some existing woods there, so it's not a super accurate. But if there were no woods there, we'd be looking at approximately .3, .4 foot candles, just to give you some comparison. If we're looking at twilight, that's about one foot candle. Deep twilight is, you know, basically .1 foot candle. So we're somewhere in the middle of, you know, dusk to, you know, really dark, somewhere in that range. That's pretty much it. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer anything you have.
The three and a half foot setback, is that just because of that, like, paper cul-de-sac?
That's correct. That's up in this area.
Okay, thank you.
And as Mike mentioned, the zoning board has already issued a variance for that and for the signage, which is a little bit oversized.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Assistant Director Murphy?
Briefly, site plan review triggers the major modification. Staff had looked at the prior decision. It's still open. They're still under construction. We're seeking to amend that decision for a change in the findings under 503I. The finding is to reflect the new addition between the entryway and then the covered patio, and then it reflects certain dimensional requirements that were listed. Staff has also prepared boilerplate conditions that limits just typical requirements, such as recording with the registry, other pre-work conditions as well.
Good, thank you. All right, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here on 589 601 Granite Street? Yep, if you could just come up and give your name and address.
My name is Jim Rayner. I represent the owners of the building adjacent to this, 597 Granite Street. You know, when we originally heard about the application to convert the building to a restaurant, we were concerned about the density of the parking that they would need. I see they've expanded their parking. But this new application now to expand even further concerns us because, I mean, they have a 90-plus-seat restaurant. They have just about 100 parking spaces and they're trying to operate a function for, as the attorney said, for weddings, et cetera, which is going to draw a lot more people. Our concern is, is that the overflow parking is going to be used in our parking lot. And we're trying to run two businesses in the adjacent building. We can't afford to have a restaurant and function hall and weddings taking up our parking spaces, which is going to hinder our ability to, for the success of the two businesses we have in our building. I mean, we're not opposed to the use. However, this latest expansion of the use has us concerned about parking overflow. And it's inevitable that when they have a function going on and a restaurant is full, they're not going to have enough parking spaces. So, you know, we would be concerned if the board didn't include some conditions about not parking in our parking lot during their functions. So, and again, we, we're concerned about any more expansion of this use. And the more space they have to entertain people, it's more people and more of a threat of overflowing into our parking lot and hindering our operations.
Is 597, is that where the goldfish is, or is that the other side?
Yeah, and we have a daycare center there too. So we need every parking space that we have in our lot. So again, we want to be a good neighbor, but we don't want to be a policeman of parking. And that's our greatest concern, is that when those functions crank up and the restaurant is active, people are going to park in our lot. They don't care that it's our lot for our businesses. They're just looking for a parking space. So I think we're kind of opposed to this further expansion now of an outdoor patio, which again, provides more space, more people, and more of a threat that we're going to be competing for parking spaces in our own lot.
Okay, thank you.
If I may respond to the neighbor.
Please do, yeah, thank you.
We're not changing the seating capacity here at all. So there's not more increased vehicles that are going to be there. We're talking about a function hall that's going to have approximately 200 seats and the restaurant having, I think it's 99. And I think that this, the parking spaces we have, 102, I think it could seat, how many people did you say? I think 357 people could park in that parking lot. So I don't think it would impact the neighbor and I would just make that statement. We're not trying to increase the size of the restaurant or the function hall. They're going to be the same.
Thank you. Assistant Director Murphy, do you know, parking-wise, what the parking table looks like on this?
Yeah, they're overparked. They're required to have 88 parking spaces. They show 101 parking spaces as it stands. So there is a surplus of parking. Thinking outside the box and as a mitigative measure, we could ask that the applicant perhaps install signage, identifying the parking for the users of the site, if that's reasonable. Maybe directing patrons of the establishment to park in those areas outside of Dunkin' Donuts Drive on the left hand and certainly inside the reconfigured circulation. Not trying to overpopulate anything with signage. Maybe the applicant could install a sign directing their patrons not to park at your property, sir. And then they'd be subject to towing.
Put a condition in your decision that says you can't park in our lot?
Yeah, I mean, I think with anything, an owner doesn't have the right to park in another lot, but I wouldn't be opposed to adding a condition that makes that more specific in the, in the decision also.
350 and 100 parking spaces. I mean, it's, I don't know, it's a lot of, but, parking spaces.
All right, I think we definitely understand that point and that concern. Let me just move on, see if there's any other.
I would only suggest that both lots, their lot and this lot, should have those signs.
Yeah, I know parking can be, used to be, I haven't been there in a while, but can be an issue on both sides. But I think, you know, generally, they're two separate properties that aren't allowed to park on each other's properties. And unfortunately, if you're applying, you're the one in here with an application, so you're the one that we can add any conditions on, if they're appropriate. I think I'll see, Member McComme, any questions or comments?
Sure, thank you. So when I look at the drawings, Mr. Modestino, the addition and the patio, what's the purpose of the addition? Because, because when I look at this, you know, it looks like this is the, you have the main entrance right there. You go up the new stairs or whatever, and I don't understand what this addition, 600 square-foot addition is.
I think it's 500 square feet, approximately.
608.
Is that correct? Okay, I'm sorry about that. Well, the idea, as I understand it from Mr. Kettke, is that the, what they would like to do, if possible, is to build this patio area, this raised patio with a, with a roof on it, so that people that show up to go to functions, whether they be weddings or whatever they might be, they might be able to come in there and spend a few moments before the place opens up for them, maybe have some discussion with some of the people that are there. It's just a place for people to hang out for a short period of time before they go into the function.
Okay, I understand the patio. I'm asking about the addition. You're adding 600 square feet. The main entrance is right there. I don't, I guess I don't understand what that 600 square feet is. It looks like it's enclosed.
It's, we're talking about the same thing, I think.
Well, there's the addition plus the patio. I haven't gone to the patio yet, so I'm asking about the addition. What is the purpose of the addition?
They're one and the same, as I understand it.
I think, I think these are just papers and this is the patio.
Oh, that's the patio? Oh, goes over, okay. All right. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome.
Okay, so I can see you're coming in. Is there a way to get, it says to the reception area right here. So if I take a left-hand turn, do I go into the reception area versus the main dining room?
Yeah.
Tell me the, tell me the flow. I'm trying to understand what the flow is here. Could you speak into the microphone, sir?
When you enter the, the property, you can come up the stairs, go straight ahead. If you're going into the function hall, you'll enter over here. If you want to get into the restaurant, you use the existing entrance over here, which is connected by the patio.
Okay, that's vice versa, what I see. I see the recep, on my chart, it looks like the reception area is to the left and the main entrance is straight ahead.
I think the reception area to the restaurant is here. The reception area to the function area is here.
Okay. All right. And, and I guess, is the intent, so the new addition looks like it has a roof over it. Is the intent also to have some coverage for the part of the patio as well, or is that just going to be open?
I think it's partially covered. Am I correct?
That's correct. It's, the intent is to have it covered. They're still working out the finer detail, excuse me, the finer details, but their intent is to have the patio covered so that, you know, you know, patrons can wait out there for, you know, going into their function and stay out of the rain if it's raining.
That's my understanding as well.
Okay. And I was concerned about safety, you know, when you're parking so close, a lot of places have bollards and such, but this looks like it's elevated. So you feel like the safety angle is taken advantage of through the elevation. I just want to get confirmation on that.
That's correct. So it's less than four feet, but it's right around three and a half feet high. So it's, there should be, you know, plenty of protection for the people on the patio. And there is a vertical concrete curbing along the parking spaces as well for the sidewalk.
Okay. And these are the only entrances and exits from, well, I'm sure you have an emergency exit. This is the, these are the only entrances to the restaurant and function room?
For the public, yes. There are some, there are some other doors, obviously, for help.
Yeah, for the staff and whatnot. Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Number Kent?
Just a question, are there seating capacities or occupancy capacities on the restaurant? And/or the reception area that would sort of limit the number of people that could be on-site at any point, anyway? Or would this, you know, would this addition increase that number and therefore put, therefore put more pressure on the parking?
Yeah, I don't think so, because I think the whole intent is to use that area for people that are going to the function hall, you know, that are going to be there anyway.
The fire department has a occupancy limit or something on restaurants or on reception areas, you know, you can't have more than X number of people. And, you know, if that exists and it's not being modified by this addition, then I guess it's not an issue. But if we were going to get more people and more cars as a result of this modification, then it is an issue.
Sure, yeah, sure. But I mean, I don't think that that is the intent of the owner. His intent is to run the function hall for a certain number of seats as a maximum and then have a dining hall separately that's smaller. So I don't think it's going to change the number of people that would be there, just because they have the patio that can occupy some of the people for a period of time before they enter.
So are the parking spaces now, what's driving that? The square footage or the number of people or?
The number of seats is what drives.
Number of seats.
Correct. One space for every three and a half seats.
So the number of seats isn't increasing?
No, we treat patios as seasonal. We don't count them towards the parking requirements because they're closed during the winter.
All right, so they're not going to put tables and serve meals on the patio or anything?
No, no, it would be limited to the overall function space.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Member Kane?
My, my question pertains to residences. We've got a retirement home across from, from here. And then it looks like there's a few residential properties towards five corners. My question, I guess, would be noise with, but now I'm maybe getting sidetracked. Member Kent, did I understand correctly that they're saying that there would not be dining on the patio, even though it's shown in the renderings here? Is that what, there would not be?
Seats for dining.
That's right. This would just be a place to come in and get yourself oriented.
Sure. Well, I guess, when I got married a couple of years ago, there was a curfew. We got married at an estate in a neighborhood. And I think it was like 10 o'clock or 9 o'clock, you had to be inside by, which is a bummer, but I understand it from a residence standpoint. Does the board think that that might be worth pursuing for a property like this, where there's an elderly home across the street, there's probably some sort of?
From my perspective, I think they're far enough apart that I don't, I don't know that it makes sense here, but. Know that it makes sense here, but.
No other questions?
No, the, Member Kent, you on?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Yeah, I guess my only thought on the parking is that considering most of the uses on the one side are daytime, and this is probably night and daytime, it would probably work out best for both of you to work out some agreement. But, that being said, that's, you know, not up to us to talk about, you know, what makes sense between the two parties, whether that makes sense at all. It seems like the impact periods would be during the day, weekdays, and probably Saturday afternoon would be the biggest parking concern for the current tenants, at least, of your property and the overflow. So I think, you know, some of Assistant Director Murphy's suggestions with informing the customers not to park on the neighbor's property, and, you know, potentially giving the planning board the right to have, to ask for a traffic monitor out there if it becomes a problem. Hopefully it won't, but I think that might satisfy some of the concerns.
I agree, uh, I also think that Mr. Ketker's been in the restaurant business for some time. He owns several restaurants, he knows how to operate them, he's a reasonable person. I'm sure that he would speak to the neighbor about that and- and work out the details.
Okay. Alright, anything else on your end, Assistant Director Murphy?
Just clarification, if I'm adding a condition on required signage.
So, I think, from my perspective, I think that would be good.
Okay.
General consensus, okay. So yes, I think a condition about signage and, um, a mechanism where the planning board can ask for a traffic monitor if- if it becomes an issue.
Correct, I would-
During peak times, maybe.
Correct, I would probably, um, word that as a independent parking analysis.
Okay, that sounds great.
Yeah.
And- and by peak times, I mean like that was daytime times, not the restaurant peak times of evening, which is most likely going to be their busiest time.
Okay.
Alright, so I guess with that, uh, we'd be looking for a motion to enter the correspondence through March 5th into the record?
So move.
Motion by Member Kent, we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Kane, are those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and then motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Motion by Member Kent, we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Kinnahan, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, and then we'll be looking for a motion to approve the ma- major modification with conditions in the staff report and discussed at the hearing. Uh, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to, um, approve the major modification to the special permit, eleven dash oh two, with the conditions as discussed.
Alright, thank you, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Kent, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Alright, it is getting late, I think we're gonna take just a three-minute break, and then come back with, we'll go next to Seven Hawthorne Road, and then move the accessory dwelling units to the end, so. Alright, uh, so ten thirty-one, back here at ten thirty-four. Mm-hmm. That's very nice. I've, I liked it, yeah, thank you. Alright, thanks for coming back, here we are. We'll move on to the continued public hearing for Seven Hawthorne Road and three thirty-eight Elm Street.
Michael Modestino, representing the applicant, Judge Clements and Charles Bachelder. If I may, we've been before the board before, I would like to take, uh, Mr. Durk out of auto. Some of the biggest issues that come up here are traffic, obviously, uh, the tree issue, landscape plan, and, uh, and sight lighting. And I- I could have Mr. Jeff Durk, uh, address the issue of- of the parking. He's done a- a survey, he's done an evaluation, if I could bring him up here now.
Okay, sounds great.
Good evening, Madam Chair, again, for the record, Jeffrey Durk with Vanessen Associates, and we're the transportation consultants for, uh, the project, um, before you at this time tonight. So, our review as it relates to the project is we undertook two sets of analyses of the project. The first was to look at, uh, trip generation, so traffic volume produced by the project, circulation within the project site, um, and then a second assessment, looking at lines of sight at the access point into the property. So, dealing with the- the first element of- of our work effort. So in terms of the amount of traffic produced by the project, uh, we're expecting on a peak hour basis the project would generate between twenty-four and thirty-one peak hour trips. So from the standpoint of, uh, trip generation, it's a relatively low traffic generator. And when we looked at the former use of the property, um, as the church with the sanctuary there, um, the net difference in trips between when the sanctuary was, um, active and what's being proposed, uh, before you tonight, is somewhere between eighteen and twenty-two peak hour trips. So again, not significantly impactful as it relates to traffic. The focus thereafter was to look at safety, so safety as it relates to circulation within the project site. I think you have plans before you that show fire truck circulation within the development. And then we also undertook a site distance analysis, uh, for the driveway. So in looking at the sight lines at the driveway along what we called Old Elm Street, uh, we performed physical measurements in the field to look at the available site distance and assess that into, in comparison to what, um, the recommended minimum site distance is for safe operation. So, at the location where the driveway is located, there's no posted speed limit along this section of Old Elm Street. The town has adopted, um, statutory speed limits for non-posted roadways pursuant to Chapter seventeen C of Mass. General Law. So what that means is that if there's not a posted speed limit, uh, the town has adopted a twenty-five mile an hour statutory speed limit. The location of the driveway in relation to Elm Street indicates that speeds aren't going to be going much faster than the statutory speed limit approaching the intersection. So we assessed it based on twenty-five miles an hour, which again is the legal speed limit, uh, along that section of roadway. So you need to see a minimum distance of a hundred and fifty-five feet for the intersection to operate safely. Uh, the measured sight lines were in excess of three hundred feet, meaning that it's almost double, uh, what's required for safe operation. I think, actually, I should, uh, correct that. The minimum sight distance we had measured was two hundred and thirty feet, so it's, um, about fifty to, um, some odd feet above what the minimum requirement is, which means the driveway can operate in a safe manner. Uh, we did provide some recommendations, obviously, to make sure that there's no plantings, uh, that would obscure sight lines, and same thing with respect to signs, um, at the location where the driveway is. And with a condition that those things that we maintain, um, no objects placed within the site triangle areas, the site distances would meet what the minimum requirements are for- for safety. Looking at the access to the site and internal circulation as it relates to emergency vehicles. So the roadway, I believe, as proposed, is going to be twenty feet wide, which is the minimum that's required for, uh, the fire code for a residential project, or any place that, uh, there's structures where they need to, uh, potentially, uh, conduct firefighting operations. So they've met that requirement. The other thing that the applicant has undertaken is a fire truck circulation analysis, which should be a part of your packet that shows that the fire truck is able to enter the property, um, and then circumnavigate around, uh, the development itself. So showing that those critical maneuvers, uh, can take place. Uh, we were also asked to look at the grade of the roadway. So the maximum grade of the roadway, it doesn't exceed seven percent in any place along the development. Uh, the fire code specifies that that maximum grade, it cannot exceed ten percent, so they're below, uh, what the grade is. So in looking at the fire truck circulation, and looking at the grades within the project site, and the sight lines at the driveways, as we're looking at access and circulation, uh, there was nothing that we saw, uh, again, with the provisions, that there's nothing placed in the site triangle areas that would inhibit sight lines, uh, that would prohibit the, uh, safe and efficient access and circulation within the development, uh, by emergency vehicles. Um, so I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have, I know we went through those items relatively quickly.
Thank you, while you're up there, I'll just ask, so, uh, the fire, fire traffic turning, it has the, um, there's grass pavers to accommodate the fire truck, but it also crosses over the driveway to unit twenty-four. And I guess my concern is, what if there's cars parked in the driveway? The units are numbered, but it looks like, what's unit number twenty-four?
So that, so that would need to be, have an adjustment, that via, so I think what's shown there, there's a, there is a portion, it looks like, of the, certainly the aerial portion, I'll have to check to see if the fire truck, um, tire portion. No portion of the bumper or the tire should go through that driveway. So an adjustment may need to be made if that's the case. The aerial portion can swing over, um, because it's made to go over the top. Uh, the bumper and tires should not go into the driveway area.
Okay, alright, um, thank you. See if there's any other members of traffic questions, well?
So the church hasn't operated in a long time?
Correct.
The neighbors have gotten lucky with the traffic. So, um, how- how do you approach this? Is this like, just a new development, and you're gonna have X number of cars and X number of trips? So it's really that straightforward?
So the guidance that, um, to the extent that I can offer guidance to you on that, is I would really look at it, we- we look at it from the standpoint of what the state would consider, which is a two-year. So if, if, um, and I don't know when the church ceased to be operating, but you would, you only get credit for a two-year window. So, it's okay for someone to put context, which I think I did, but from the standpoint of if the church was not operational, or whatever the church was considered as being operational within the two-year period, that's all you can consider, um, as kind of a comparison. So, if it was not operational the past two years, then you would consider it as, the buildings were all there, but from an impact perspective, it's new.
Yeah, and this question might be more for Mr. Clements, but when, when and if, if and when, construction starts, are you just gonna use the- the same, um, entrance, if you will?
Yeah, so currently, so the entranceway has been established by the church. That was the entranceway to the large parking lot, uh, and also fed back to the school. So the answer is yes, our intention, and we're actually actively, uh, in the demolition phase. The church has already been demolished, schools follow. That entire area is fenced, and we have a drive lane, and we have the circulation. So for heavy equipment, we've yet to open that, uh, that emergency access road, but for now, it's worked out fine, so during construction, that'll be our temporary entrance exit, and, uh, that's the idea.
Have you had any comments from the neighbors during the demolition?
Yeah, yeah, we've, we've heard quite the audience, uh, if you follow social media, um, quite, quite the audience, uh, on a daily basis. I think people are just glad that, you know, that it's moving forward, and that's the idea at this point, just to keep moving forward, you know, getting the full momentum, and try and get some of this dusty, dirty work out before everybody wants to open their windows, and, so.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Hopping a little bit out of order, but just wanted to handle some of the traffic questions-
Sure.
-before we move on, any other sort of traffic-specific questions right now? No, okay, alright. I'll, um, I know we did receive a peer review, I'm sorry, did you want to present anything else now, or should I move on to the staff and peer review comments?
Sure, uh, I'd just like to run through real quick, I don't wanna, you know, it's late in the evening, I know everybody's exhausted. I haven't received any, uh, any staff, uh, report for this hearing, um, but, you know, there were some questions relative to landscaping, um, we have that planned. I know at the last hearing, you had, you know, you- you had asked that we present that, I'm happy to present it tonight. I can give you a brief summary as to what that- that landscaping is. Certainly turn the page for you real quick. So this plan here is- is a general outline of our tree planting, uh, replanting plan. As you can see, we have, uh, a hundred and eight trees along the perimeter of the property. As you can see, we have 108 trees along the perimeter of the property. This plan here is basically, what this is, is a per-unit landscape plan. This was included in your packet back in December. We recently attended the Conservation Board. They made some comments, asked for specific plantings. This plan does just that. We've complied with their request. Overall, we have about close to 900 plantings throughout the facility, along with 108 trees being replanted. As you know, there's a new tree ordinance here in town. There's the conservation tree requirement, then there's the planning board side of that. Quick summary, you know, I know that it's a relatively new bylaw here in Braintree. The Conservation Commission, in adopting their bylaw for the tree ordinance, assigned a fee to each and every tree that could not be replanted for whatever reason. The planning side during their approval of this tree ordinance did not include a fee for any tree that cannot be replanted. But taking it as a, you know, on a practical approach, I think certainly a new bylaw. This is probably the biggest project that involves such a large clearing, if you will. If you'd just give me one minute to... So as you can see, this was also included in your December package when we made our submission to the board. We've cleaned it up a bit. We've quantified the impacted areas, and we've distinguished between what would be within that buffer zone, which is under the purview of the conservation, and we've also distinguished what trees would be outside under the purview of the planning board. So as a quick summary on that, you have 297 trees being removed. Notably, in discussion with staff, the mayor's office, and the mayor herself, being that it's really a first time that we've had this substantial of a project, I thought it would be prudent, and certainly the staff and the mayor agreed with the same, that before we start calculating trees, what we need to look at is what trees are actually healthy at this point. Given that the property has been neglected for many years, I don't think it's fair to say, okay, each and every tree being removed. I think what you need to look at more along the lines of what is a healthy tree. So we agreed to go ahead in agreement with, again, the mayor's office and staff, and we hired a professional arborist to go in and further evaluate what condition the trees are and, you know, what trees would be removed in the normal course of maintaining this property. And we have, from our arborist, certified arborist calculation, which basically summarizes, and I have handouts if you'd like, and I can pass these to you, with photographs to support. So essentially, we have 238 trees outside of the wetlands. 66 are identified as dead or compromised. 59 trees within the 100-foot buffer, with 22 trees being identified as dead or compromised. So I guess there's, what we need to do over the next several days is meet with Connor, figure out how he'd like to address this new bylaw, try and come up with some fee so that we know what we're looking at, and we can make some educated decisions. But again, we just need the information so that we can respond on that. Yeah, sure. Mike, if you'd like to hand those out to the board.
Yes, please. Thank you.
So again, just, we were before this board quite some time ago and off, you know, it's late in the evening, I forget exactly when, six, eight months ago, plus or minus. We saw it, received our zoning change to fill the, you know, to fill our wants and desires as well as the community desires for this type of housing. Again, 12-acre apostle, 51 units, half the density that would be permitted by the zoning bylaw. Challenging site, no doubt about it. Challenging to the extent that it's a very costly endeavor for us to design and implement this type of housing. Individual drainage units, where if we did a single building, much easier, as the previous presentations made easily show. A little more involved in terms of peer review. We've met with the peer reviewer. We've evaluated, yeah, I see. We've, you know, he evaluated the plans, provided some initial comments. We've responded to those comments. So thankfully, our engineer is working closely with the town's peer review engineer. We expect to, you know, with the conservation meeting, I think we came to a meeting of the mind. Some of the concerns are that we, you know, we did certain amount of test pit soil evaluation to make sure that the soil conditions will be appropriate. We did about six of those. We did those at the direction of our previous planning director, Melissa, as well as the conservation agent, Kelly, both who are not with us any longer. So, you know, we kind of, we all came to a consensus that we didn't want to start removing trees just to get into the soil samples. I think we had enough analytical data based on the samples that we took that, like any other order of conditions, would stay in this town prior to installing this drainage system, verifying the field. So, you know, I think that my engineer and the town peer review engineer have come to some agreement that that's, that makes sense. I mean, I don't think this town would expect me to go on clear cut, only to do test pits, and that's kind of what we're up against. So I expect that that's going to get resolved. There's some other cleanup detail work that needs to be done, and, you know, we didn't ask our engineer to be here tonight, but I know that he's working diligently to meet some of the requests that were made of him. Again, we met with the Conservation Commission. We fully comply with the DEP bylaw, with the DEP regulations, as well as the local conservation bylaws here in Braintree. We're not, we're staying outside of the no-touch zone. We are doing a small wetland replication, much smaller than what is allowable. You're up to 5,000 square feet of replication. We're less than half of that, and doing a two-to-one replication, I believe. But very straightforward process as far as the conservation goes. We meet all the requisites. We don't foresee any issues there. Some stormwater revisions that are being worked on. And in terms of fire access, there were some questions on that. Again, we're, you know, we'll work through those minor details, very small. We'll do those checks and balances. But with that said, trying to go quick, I know we're all exhausted this evening, but again, this is a very important project. We've been, you know, we actually own the project. I'm happy to report for the first time in this property's history where it's being paid, you know, it's paying its tax bill, albeit a little disagreement on the land area, but, you know, we're going to hash that out. But, you know, we're looking forward to finally delivering to the community a commitment for this 55-inch overhousering, and we hope that, I think, well, I'm expecting that we'll have full-on conditions for the next hearing to allow us to continue forward. Obviously, there's some questions. I wish we had more time this evening, but, you know, I'm here and I'm willing to stay as late as we need to to answer any and all questions so that we can get to a stage of conditions where we're kind of in that building season and steadily moving forward as the days go on. Church has been demolished. Extensive amount of asbestos abatement has been performed, and looking forward to it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I know Mr. Diaz, Assistant Director Murphy, do you have anything to add, or should I just call Mr. Diaz to?
Mr. Diaz first.
Okay. Mr. Diaz, if you could please go over your report.
Did you, oh, thanks.
Get out of your way. Right ahead. Thank you.
Good evening again. For the record, Eric Diaz, registered professional engineer, Strongpoint Engineering. We did have an opportunity to complete our first pass at a stormwater review on this. There are quite a few comments, but I think there were 51 comments. The reality is that there were three or four of them that were, that had potential to possibly alter the design. A lot of the rest were dotting i's, crossing t's type of things. But I think Mr. Clemens said it pretty well. Our primary concern with the design is that the location that the test pits were done, were done on the northern portion of the site, kind of opposite where the BBW is, which is to the south. So there's a pretty significant grade change between the north and the south side of the site, in some cases by close to 60 feet. So what the concern is, is that as you move down that grade and closer to the wetland area, you would expect the groundwater to be higher and the soils to be more restrictive. Since the stormwater design relies on individual stormwater systems for every building, if groundwater's high at those lower elevations, they may not work correctly. So, you know, we thought it was important to get out there and to do some more test pits, and we understand the reasoning why they weren't done. Then we sort of, as Mr. Clemens said, hashed this out a bit at the Conservation Commission, and what we landed on is the design engineer feels that he can adapt his design to be able to eliminate a good portion of those individual infiltration systems from the lower units and still not only have the system work correctly, but also meet the regulatory requirements. So I think our compromise on meeting of the mind, so to speak, was, okay, well, let's see those numbers, right? What we don't want to do is get out there, start doing test pits when we mobilize, realize we have a problem, and then end up maybe with nothing but a solution that doesn't maybe meet the requirements that we were looking for. So what we're anticipating is to see a revised set of calculations that kind of prove the quote "Plan B" that they're intending, and then if we can do that, I think we can go ahead and probably condition those additional test pits upon mobilization to the site and things like that. Aside from that, there was just one area of a watershed delineation that we wanted to take a look at, that they're going to work into the design. So I think once those kind of primary things are done, where in, obviously, the rest of the i's are dotted and t's are crossed, we're probably looking pretty good at this point.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Just quickly to the board. We have prepared some comments. I apologize those were not shared with you this evening. Most of the site plan review criteria has been satisfied on the access and egress to the site, which is, A, the site plan review. Amongst town officials, we've been discussing with our DPW department, along with our police department. We're looking for signage for a no-left turn on Elm Street during peak hours, and then no-U-turn signage up on the right-hand maneuver onto Hawthorne Road. Further than that, we're encouraging the applicant to work with our peer review consultant. They have a pretty big deadline for March 19th. That's for them to get materials through the Conservation Commission. Sooner we get those, sooner we can get it out, sooner we can move forward with this project. Other than that, just some minor comments in relation to the lighting and certain landscaping. We are coordinating between the mayor's office and the tree committee so we can establish requirements for the applicant payment in lieu or direct replacement of the trees, but something we are working towards.
Because again, it's not feasible. Because again, it's not feasible to go out and test every single location. Take the analytical data that you have available, and then you, Connor would put a condition in that says, you know, prior to the installation of your drainage system, you need to certify that the soils are good. I went so far as to say, you know, we don't mind keeping Eric on as a peer review consultant to witness those, although we have a qualified engineer. He's going to be the ultimate certifier of those systems. But again, it's not a reluctance for us to do test pits. We'd be more than happy to do it. We have plenty of equipment on site to do that now. Just a function of, do we want to get in there, start ripping into the wetlands, and just, we'll certainly give all the decisions that come through, which is a license to you folks in the town. And again, our substantial investment, where, you know, we're investing well over $30 million into this site, so we're going to protect our investment and make sure that it works properly. Belts and suspenders, that's all we're looking at.
All right. Thanks for that clarification. Member McComey?
I don't have any other questions.
Number Kent?
Nor do I.
Number King?
My question coming up is, I remember that woman that came and spoke at the last meeting about her granddaughter, who I believe has cerebral palsy, and a concern about parking or, I believe there's a concern about parking across the street. I know that that's not, it's off your property. I'm not sure there's much that we can do about that, but just, it comes to mind again. I guess with cars turning and everything, I don't know. It just comes to mind. I don't, I don't know.
Absolutely. We're not going to solve those issues. Those issues have existed on that street since, and again, it was an operating church, a school. The traffic impacts were a lot more substantial during that time. I will tell you, we have worked with our director, Butter, who has no legal access to her garage, so we're going to try and work something out to give her an easement into the site. But again, you know, how far can we go? How much can we solve? Certainly want to be a good neighbor, and we always have been historically on every project we do. We want to be fair and, you know, cooperate with neighbors. It is an unfortunate situation. Those, you know, those houses have very little driveway access, and they've been like that since they were built, quite frankly. But we're certainly, you know, we've grown a good relationship with our neighbors. We speak to many of them on a daily basis. They've been great. Some that didn't support us now support us. So, you know, I guess that's kind of a, there's not much this board can do. I think that becomes more of good-faith gestures. Maybe we can carve something out. But if there was something that would require movement of this board, we'd certainly come back and seek that relief.
All right. Assistant Director Murphy, do you need any other direction from us, or just a motion to continue?
We've been working towards getting the applicant in a position where he could have draft conditions prepared. If he has a successful peer review ahead of the Conservation Commission, which I believe is April 3rd, do I have the board's permission to prepare draft conditions for your review?
Okay. Am I on any concerns from other board members? No? Okay. Yes?
Thank you.
You'll have a busy month.
I'm going to be working hard. I'll give them that.
Yes, for sure. All right. With that, I'll be looking for a motion to continue to April 8th.
So move.
Motion by Member Kent. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member McComey. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. See you on April.
Thank you for saying late.
Idiot. Almost there. Almost there. I don't know. Messing around.
All right. Anybody watching on TV? We're not done yet. Next item that we have on our agenda is TCO 2503. Assistant Director Murphy, when you're ready, if you could read the public notice.
Yep. Notice given by the planning board under the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5 and 11, the Braintree Zoning Ordinance, Chapter 135, Articles 11 and Articles 5. A public hearing will be conducted on Tuesday, March 11th, 2025, at 7:15 PM in Braintree Town Hall. The planning board will provide a recommendation to the town council on Order 25-003, sponsored by Mayor Aaron V. Joyce. Said order is a zoning ordinance text amendment for accessory dwelling units pursuant to Chapter 150, Section 7 and 8 of the Acts of 2024, Affordable Homes Act.
All right. Thank you. And since, well, we're basically the applicant, right?
Yeah.
I know we talked a little bit about this at the prior meeting with the ADU, but, and you've provided a staff report, but you just give a little update of where we're at?
Yeah.
And since, well, we're basically the applicant, right?
Yeah.
I know we talked a little bit about this at the prior meeting with the ADU, but, and you've provided a staff report, but you just give a little update of where we're at?
Yeah. So we've been working internally on sort of amending our zoning ordinance to comply with the Act and to comply under EO HLC guidelines. EO HLC's guidelines were modified on January 31st, and there were a couple surprises that we found. EO HLC has asked municipalities, cities and towns, that proposed ADUs are going to follow the setbacks for accessory structures, right? They're going to limit in terms of the square footage based on either half the size of your dwelling's square footage total, or 900 square feet, whichever is less. So we've been working through our existing bylaw, amending certain sections, and those sections include our definitions, our table of principal uses, Section 135-603, permitted accessory uses in residential districts, adding a new section, 135-618, amending 135-701, Table of Dimensional and Density Regulations and Notes, removing Section 135-710, limitations on the number of buildings for dwelling purposes on each lot, and then amending Section 135-806A, Schedule of Off-Street Parking Requirements. Under the definitions, we added new definitions and we modified some definitions. Under our Table of Principal Uses, once again, we modified that to reflect the guidelines in the Act. To really jump to the meat of this, and discussions we've had between officials here in Town Hall, is the setbacks of accessory structures. Now, under our current bylaw, in 135-603, you cannot use your front yard for anything other than open space and access, and even your driveway is technically approved by the building inspector. So we're comfortable in maintaining that, which would be the required front yard setback for any structure that is constructed accessory or principal. Moving on, we started to amend our Table of Dimensional Density regs and Notes. As I said before, five feet was allowed earlier. We've had people in the community ask for 10. We've had people in the community ask for five, and now we've come in at sort of a sweet spot at eight feet. In addition to that, our dimensional table has been lacking the allowable height for accessory structures, and I'm sure some people are aware that their accessory structures in this community, they're being built up to 35 feet in height because they're allowed to. So we're seeking to amend that. We're going to be at 18 feet in one and a half stories, and then should you choose to construct a larger accessory structure past that, because we sort of envision a situation where someone could come in and construct a ground garage and an ADU on top. So for that person to do that, or allow the maximum total height for accessory structures to be 28 feet to 20 stories. However, the higher you go, at the 18, you have to add an additional to your rear yard setback. For example, Mr. Campbell's site, his was above 18, it was at 20 feet in height. We asked him to add two feet on to his rear yard setback so that way he complied, just for an example. Other than that, the revisions outside of there, just following our guidelines and complying with the Act.
All right. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Does anybody out there have any comments? No? Okay. Member McComme?
I like all those suggestions.
All right.
I'll leave it at that.
Excellent. Number Kent?
Sounds good. I'd like a chance to read it. Did I get this?
It might have just, I think we got the email. I can't remember if the hard copy was in the package or not.
I believe you were given the TCO application, and then my staff report denotes the changes as discussed tonight.
Let's see. Move on for now. See if Member Kane has any comments or questions.
28 feet's pretty tall.
What's that?
28 feet is pretty tall.
It is. But then they would be required to have a...
Like 15-foot setback or something.
Yeah, yeah. 18.
Yeah.
If you'll, Mike, giving that to Mr. Kent. That's the proposed text.
Member, can I have any comments or questions?
No.
Yeah, I sort of went back and forth on the height part of it, although it seems high, but, you know, if we do it too low, where do we end up? And so I think that it does strike a good balance, and, you know, some of them we might end up kicking ourselves, and some of them we might not. But I think as far as trying to put in parameters, I think that made sense. Yeah.
I may have missed it, but was that by, like, automatic that if they increase a foot, they can add a foot to the setback?
Yeah, that's in the proposed text I provided with you tonight. So for example, they're allowed to go up to 18 feet with an eight-foot setback off the rear. They go higher than 18, for every foot in linear height, they're adding a foot to the rear yard setback.
And would that change the process for them, though? If they add that foot to both, would they then have to get a different special permit, or would that be?
No. No, that would be by right. So they would...
So then would there be a cap, I guess, in total of how high?
The cap would be the 28 feet as proposed in the text.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. When they would, just so people are familiar, when they go to file a building permit, they're going to have to show that information for us. They'd have to give us a zoning block table on their plans. Our department reviews, I want to say, 60% of the building permits that come in, and we check them for zoning compliance in conjunction with the building inspector. So that's something we would enforce.
And with the height, so if it's an ADU where there's residential, then it would be by right. But if it was something like, came in today with just a pool house, it would still be the special permit, right?
Correct. Yes. Yeah.
So I'm seeing here, we can have up to five of these on the properties?
Five accessory structures?
Yeah.
You could have a garage, you could have a detached garage up to three bays, you could have a shed, and then you could have an accessory dwelling unit. So it would really be three structures. You throw in a pool, that makes it four. And then anything else, like a pool cabana, things like that would be the special permit.
So you can only have one of each of those on your property?
No, you can have all...
No, 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 sorry. I mean, you can't have two cabanas?
Oh, no. They would have to come for a special permit to do that.
Okay. Try to make sure we don't have just like a block in a lot, you know?
Yeah. I, you know, I think there's a larger discussion. Right now, we're trying to comply with the Act and the guidelines to keep the town whole, but I think there's going to be a larger discussion in the future on how, as a municipality, we want to handle accessory structures.
Okay. So we're not passing this tonight?
I'm asking for a favorable recommendation on the text as modified in the staff report.
Yes, so one thing to keep in mind, that the law went into effect with the accessory dwelling unit. So as of now, anybody can come in with an application on one of those, and under state law can permanent by right. So part of the goal here is to put in regulations that monitor any of those applications that come in and put something into action.
Is there currently any bylaw on short-term rentals in town, or?
It's in our general ordinance. It's prohibited.
Oh, it's entirely prohibited?
Correct.
You can't have an Airbnb?
No. You'll see them. Our building inspector enforces that.
Got it. And that won't change here. So this accessory dwelling unit would be a long-term rental property?
Mm-hmm. Yep. It would be typically 30 days or more.
30 days or more?
Yeah. Because there could be tenants that will.
Member Kent, with all the time that you've had to thoroughly study that multi-page document, did you have any questions or comments that came up?
I do not.
All right. So I guess with that, be looking for a motion to close the public hearing on the recommendation.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
All right. We have a motion by Member McComme. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now, looking for a motion on the recommendation itself.
I'll make a motion for positive endorsement of the criteria stated by the assistant director.
Second.
All right. Motion by Member McComme, second by Member Kinnahan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you. And now, just looking for a motion to close the hearing tonight.
Motion to close.
Motion by Member Kane. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Kinnahan. All those in favor?
Aye.